Call to order, we have a quorum. Could we have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Protam Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Thank you, Weston. Would you please say the pledge for us today?
Yes, welcome, everyone.
And welcome to the October 10th, 2023, meeting of the Ojai City Council.
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Weston. And in honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day, which was yesterday, and given that it's such a chaotic time on the planet right now, I would like to begin our meeting with a land acknowledgement and then a moment of silence. A land acknowledgement is a formal statement that recognizes and respects Indigenous peoples as traditional stewards of this unceded land and the enduring relationship that exists between Indigenous peoples and traditional territories. The land acknowledgement signals a commitment to develop a meaningful relationship with the Schumash. The Ojai City Council recognizes that we are fortunate that Ojai and Ventura County still have many residents from the Barbarano-Venturano Band of Mission Indians. They remind us that the land that we love and live on was protected and nurtured by the Indigenous people for thousands of years. In the spirit of healing, we acknowledge and honor the Schumash tribes who live among us today, the original people of the land upon which our city stands, their ancestors, and future generations. And if we can all just take a moment of silence in recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you all. And we will move on to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
I would like to pull item two, the Commissioner, the HPC appointment, because one of the applicants was out of town. I was just able to meet with her today, and it's too rushed, so we will bring that back. So thank you for your patience, Chair Akins.
And I want to pull item three.
Okay.
And the reason being that there, I think we need more analysis of how the the three things we're being asked to do might impact the claims being made by the developer.
So we have a motion to pull two and three. Is there a motion to approve the rest of the agenda?
Well, wait a minute. I'm not in favor of a motion, necessarily in favor of a motion to pull item three. Can't we use that time to? We don't have to make a decision. Can't we use that time to ask questions? That seems like a big item to pull, and we have so many other things on the agenda.
I think it's very important that we get analysis of what this is about before we start, you know, discussing what we would do on it.
And I would actually agree with that. I have heard from many members of the public, and they would like to do some more research on this item. So I think we definitely need more time, so.
I would make a comment that I'm agreeing with Council, with Mayor Protam Souza Francina, that we could discuss it and not vote on it, but even to air out what some of those confusions might be would be helpful. I have questions. Potentially, there are people here to speak on it. Once again, I would prefer, before we move this forward, that we get some public input onto what this exactly means. It doesn't in any way bind us to voting on it and/or tabling it. So to me, this is a premature motion, and I would prefer that we at least understand the situation before we just say, "Go away and come back with your analysis." I would like to have some questions in there and figure out what my questions are.
I did take time to ask my questions to the city attorney, and they were answered. He responded to my satisfaction, so I'm actually ready to move on it.
Okay, well, we do have a motion and a second.
So the motion on the table, as I understand it, is to approve the agenda as proposed. A subsequent motion could be made to approve the agenda with item three pulled, and then that voted upon first, and then, or a motion to amend the original, or amend the original motion to delete item three, vote on that, and then vote on what's left.
And pulling item two also.
My sense is there was consensus to pull item two, but I would ask the council to confirm that.
Okay. Councilmember Whitman, did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we pull both item two and item three for later analysis and discussion. Bring them back at a later time.
Is there a second for that? Just one second, is there a second?
I did have some questions for the city attorney and for regarding this, this topic. And I would, I would be, I mean, here we go again. Our, you know, we're in the same situation and that we had, where my colleagues are asking for more time. And, and, and so I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Okay, discussion? Well, could we, we have a motion and we have a second.
There has to be discussion.
Excuse me, could you? Excuse me, councilmembers, could you please remember not to interrupt or bring it through the chair? And I can hear you, but if you could take turns, because when you're speaking at the same time, it doesn't, it's not effective. So we have a motion, we have a second. Would you like to make a comment, Councilmember Rule?
I would. Once again, I think Councilmember Lang is not understanding the situation. We are not asking, we are not saying we don't want more time. What we're saying is that there are questions here in this room. There are people that showed up to discuss this item. This is, this is the same thing that happened with the general plan, where we just said, "Nope, we're not going to discuss anything. We're not going to move on anything." There is nothing here that says we have to vote on this. The only thing with this on, on the agenda, we're not asking not to have more time. We're asking to have a preliminary discussion right now with the ability to give more time. What we're doing by pulling this motion is saying that everyone who showed up here to make comment will not be making comment. I will not be making comment. Souza Francina will not be making comment or asking questions. So that's what we're really doing, is we're saying that we don't need to have any public input right now or questions right now, regardless of the fact that people have showed up to discuss it. It's not a matter of giving more time or not giving more time. That is a misrepresentation of what this discussion is.
Mayor Protam?
Yes, I would like to know what is meant by further analysis and who's going to do this analysis. And I would like to know from the city attorney, if you are, you're prepared. I would guess, hope that you can answer questions that may come up. I mean, I don't understand what you mean by, I mean.
I think the issues need to be framed properly, and that requires analysis.
Who's going to be doing this analysis?
That's yet to be determined.
Well, you must have.
Excuse me, could we please have some decorum and civility? And if you could refrain from any comments so that we could hear, please? All right, well, we do have a motion and we have a second. So could we have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor.
Wait, wait, wait. City attorney, who, who would be doing this further analysis?
My expectation is that if the council were to ask for further analysis, myself would provide additional analysis, likely the staff, Mr. Seabert, Mr. Scott, and if the council, and from there, as the council may direct.
Well, you know, one of the reasons we get our agenda usually on Thursday or Friday is that we have three days, and even four days, to ask for further analysis, to gather information. I mean, to spring this on us at this late moment, I'm, I object to that.
Okay, roll call? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lang?
So since we already having a discussion about it, let's have the discussion and, and I will go ahead and have the discussion.
Thank you. All right, approval of the agenda with pulling item two. A motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
I thought we already did that.
It might be cleaner for a new, erase the prior motions and a new motion. Make the record clear.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda except pull item number two.
I'll, I'll second that.
Roll call, please, Weston?
Mayor Protam Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Stix.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will move on to presentation. We have a presentation of the annual Ojai Day Poster Competition and an update on the special event of 2023. So thank you to Kristi and Louise, much appreciated. They're bringing forward a presentation of the Ojai Day poster design entries, and we'll also update the council and public on plans for the day. Thank you, Kristi. Hi.
So my name is Kristi Rivera. I am the Events and Public Information Officer with the City of Ojai, and I'm here to present the submissions for the Ojai Day 2023 Poster Competition. We had eight in total. So next slide, please. The first is titled Downtown Ojai by Jack Kendall Velasquez. Next slide, please. Then we have Fountain Park by Jack Kendall Velasquez as well. Next slide, please. Ojai Day by Dennis Wood. Next slide, please. Up on Chief Peak by Ren D'Angelo. Next slide, please. Cruisin' Ojai Main Street by Francie Beaman. Next slide, please. Eye of Butterfly by Tina Miller. Next slide, please. Daydreaming by Tina Miller. Next slide, please. And Sprinkle of Ojai by Tina Miller as well. And then we had Staff Art Jury, who, next slide, please, decided on the winning design, Ojai Day by Dennis Wood. Next slide, please. And that's the winning design. They're in person as well.
Very nice. It's beautiful, yeah, yeah.
So just a brief update. Ojai Day will be October 21st, on Saturday. We will be having it on Ojai Avenue from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The road will not be closed overnight. It'll be closed starting 6:00 a.m. that day, reopening at 8:00 p.m.
All right, thank you so much, Kristi. Looking forward to, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a great night.
You too. All right, we will move on to commission reports. We have a commission report from Chair Akins.
So let, let me, I'm Brian Akins. I'm the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. My head is exploding, but lots of things happening. Lots, head is exploding, but lots of things, so. And so is my phone wondering why the HPC item got pulled, and I'll explain it to you. So as you know, we've been working for, for that. One of the things we have, I made a comment, I think a month ago, that the, the outreach in the newspaper, I felt was lacking. I went back and double-checked that. There was an advertisement, June 9th for Parks and Recs and a youth commissioner, June 23rd for Ventura, Parks and Rec in Ventura, California. The next advertisement that was in the paper was actually last Friday, and that's when the Historic Preservation Commission advertisement for the position that Cindy Convery vacated June, or September 14th was finally advertised for. And so we, as I've mentioned in the past, we have been doing our own recruiting, reaching out to candidates. I do want to clarify something. So people are talking about the four applications that are out there. This is one applicant. She put it in at the beginning of the year, June 7th, or January 17th. Mayor Stix met with her. Thank you for doing that. Here's another applicant. She put her application in January 11th. Here's the third applicant. A non-resident put her commission, her application in March 1st. And our fourth applicant, also a non-resident, put her application in April 1st. So again, and this is just, you know, I came to you on the priorities before we even lost our commissioner and said that, you know, our commissions are not able to meet for, for various reasons, so. That's where we are in our commission. We, we thought we had, well, we had candidates in place. In fact, that changed this afternoon because of a family health issue on, on one of our candidates that we're looking forward to. And so we will just postpone and do what we can when it comes in November. For Ojai Day, we will reach out to Mara, our staff liaison, and have her reach out to the commissioners so that we're staffed for Ojai Day. And I'll be dusting off my gel stripes and my crazy hat. So that's where we are. We are, we are waiting to meet. We're anxious to meet. The other thing that, if we had actually a meeting in September, which is when we were planned, it got canceled just before that, we would have, there's a, and I've mentioned this before, some rumors going around that the Structures of Merit, which came about nine years ago, my first meeting in the HPC in September 2014, was actually talking about the Structures of Merit between Craig Walker and Terry Hill. So when Craig came back on the, on the commission, he asked that that item be brought forward to the commission. We did that. Again, I was on the commission with Craig before. That, there is some crossover between the Structures of Merit that we brought up in the joint meeting we had with all of you and with the Downtown Historic District. So I am here because we, we didn't get to have that meeting on September 14th that would have clarified that. To, again, clarify that, for those that are listening, that the Structures of Merit is an independent initiative. The Structures of Merit is mentioned in the code session, city code. It is something that is suggested by the Historic Preservation that they find and they put forward. If we had have brought it to you by now, which I hoped we would have done, that would have actually been the third time that it came before the council. I've been around for all of those. The first few times it got punted, so go figure. But the Structures of Merit, even though there's a slight overlap to that, is not being put out as a backdoor way for the HPC to get control of your properties. I don't live in this city. I'm not indebted to anyone, or I give all I can, so I have, all I want to do is keep Ojai, the beautiful Ojai that it is. The Downtown Historic District, we had planned to bring out the new map in October, but we're not going to be able to, we may, may not be able to meet in October. Hopefully we are, but, well, it is October. No, sorry. Months going too fast. I said my head had blown up. So again, I want to thank all the many people that, that helped us. I had a new phrase that said, "Sometime the magic happens after the closing gavel bangs." I saw some of those magic, and I will, since Matt was there, I will tell you, none of that broke the Brown Act in any way, at all. If we had have, Mr. Summers would have reminded us that we were out of turn, so. So anyway, I appreciate everyone's support and, and your efforts in trying to enable us to meet, to, to keep going with the large agenda that we put in place for our September 14th meeting. And again, just a plea for the other commissioners that we bring them applicants as much as we can.
May I ask a question, Mayor? So there's four applications, but the qualifying person has to live in the city limit, correct? So there's only two that qualify. And, and so my question is, are the, are we still taking applications or? Okay, so the public needs to know that, all right?
I hope so, yes, yes. And again, I'm sorry.
The application form is available at the city clerk's office and I assume on the website?
Correct. And again, yes, four applicants, two of which were residents, two were non-residents, because with the new rules, we can't bring in a non-resident. They weren't interviewed. But the other two were, again, by Mayor Stix, so.
Thank you, Chair Akins, much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to public communication. And just a reminder, these are items not on the agenda, and because they're not on the agenda, we cannot discuss them. We appreciate your viewpoint and participation, and we can agendize them in the future. Just a reminder that we have, you have three minutes, and at the end, you'll hear a chime. So please stop speaking when your time is up. There's no giving away time to any speaker, and if you're in agreement with a previous person, please just say ditto. And there's been a request to say your name and address. Of course, that's optional. And we will begin, we have a half an hour, so we'll begin with the first 10, which are in my hand, and then we will continue after the first item. So let's begin with Roncel Larsono from the library, David Bell, and Colin Jones.
All right. Thank you so much, members of council. My name is Roncel Larsono, and I am the Regional Librarian for the Ojai Valley, here to just give you a little update on what we have going on at the Ojai Library this month. So first, I want to mention that actually on this coming Saturday, October 14th, we have an author, former FBI and Department of Justice Special Agent Kenneth Strange, who's going to visit the Ojai Library to talk about his newest book, which is called A Cop's Son: One Man, One G-Man's Fight Against Jihad, Global Fraud, and the Cartels. During his career, Strange served with three U.S. government agencies pursuing criminals and bad actors, including some of the most heinous criminals on the planet. This book draws on true crime investigative stories accrued over a remarkable career and includes a posthumous homage to Strange's father's storied 38-year NYPD career. So a local author coming on Saturday, October 14th. Then the following week, on Thursday, October 19th, the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance is going to be joining the Ojai Library to celebrate Energy Awareness Month. You can come to the library at 5:00 p.m. to learn about electric vehicles at an exciting event that's perfect for families and EV enthusiasts of all ages. You can join in for an Electric Vehicle 101 presentation. You can explore an electric car in person at the library, and you can enjoy a fun craft activity we're going to have set up for kids. These special events are happening alongside our usual offerings. We have, of course, our Monday Morning Ukulele Club. We have our Wednesday Morning Storytimes for children's age zero to five. And then we have our knitting and fiber arts workshops on Sundays, as well as many other activities. For a list of all of our programs, please visit our website, vencolibrary.org. And that's all that I have for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ron. Next, we have David Bell, then Elle Caldwell, and then Colin Jones. And just a reminder that, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
And these, these, this color card are for events and organizations.
Yes, I'm an event and an organization.
Thank you. Wonderful, thank you.
Thanks for listening. My name's David Bell, and I'm a member of the Ojai Film Society. So we're the people that put the free movies on at Libby Bowl. I know a lot of people have been coming out. This year was the second year. I know that the Ojai Film Society goes back a long ways, but it's been kind of revitalized, re-whatever, animated. And I think it originally started with a group of people that during the pandemic, they're like, "Hey, why don't we show some movies in Sarzati Park? And it'll be great, we can be outside." And I think it was actually the city that said, "Why don't you guys use Libby Bowl?" And so, you know, we did. I got involved that, that last year by going to a movie and saying like, "Well, I'd like to do this." And we had like a blow-up screen, and it was all kind of put together. And now this year, we've got just a giant screen. It's a fantastic place to see a movie. We've had over 4,000 people come, and it really feels like it's, it's becoming a kind of a, of a thing. You know, the idea is like, we want it to become a thing in Ojai, where people can come, see these great movies for free, and that it gets sort of branded, that people are sort of like, "Hey, it's the Friday Night Movies," right? And so the reason I'm here is we're having a bit of an issue with the city in terms of getting the dates that we need for the Libby Bowl. And it's kind of an important thing that we actually have certain specific dates, because like, it has to do with like, the time the sun sets and things, you know, because we got to be out, we got to be over by 10. So I have it here, the dates we've been looking for. And like I say, the city's always been great. They've helped us a lot. But I wanted to get out here and put it on somebody's radar, whether we can possibly get those dates either kind of legacied in for the Film Society. It's a great event. It's completely free for everybody in the town. It really was a major success this year. But if we don't have the dates sort of locked down, it becomes kind of difficult to, to sort of commit to doing it. And, and I do know that the last movie we did was, was Friday, last Friday. And Monday, we, we, yeah, and, and, you know, and it was, it was great. And we, Sound of Music, we did, The Princess Bride, so many great movies. But on Monday, we were meeting to basically plan for next summer. That's how quick it's got to. It doesn't seem like a lot to just show a movie in the park, but it takes a lot of getting your ducks in a row. So if I might, to just pitch it to the city council, the dates we need for next summer are July 26th, August 9th and 23rd, September 6th and 20th, and October 4th. And that sounds very specific, but it literally, if we can't get those dates, it just might not work out. It might not work out for the sun. We can't really do two weeks in a row because it's just too much to kind of pull together. So it's sort of like every other Friday. Any help the city council can give us, we appreciate everything you've done so far, and thank you very much.
Thank you, David. At a future, future time. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
And thanks too for all the work that you've done. This summer series was incredible, and it was really a fantastic event.
Thank you, David. Next, we have Elle Caldwell, then Colin Jones, then Barry Rabe.
Good evening, council, and Mayor Stix. I'm, I'm here, I should say, now for something completely different. I'm here to ask each of you to thoughtfully question who you are here to serve. Do you serve the majority of opinions of speakers and email senders on any particular issue? I wholeheartedly ask you to listen to and consider every opinion expressed, but we do not know who or how many people they represent. Your tally of prone con comments is a questionable premise to base your votes on. It seems to me the same is true in the case of the number of voters who sign a petition. Again, I assert, you should listen and be informed by the numbers, but should you base your votes on that? Do you serve the people of your district, or at large, in the mayor's case, who supported you in conversations with funding, time, energy, and their votes? This is a very important question when an election as close as the recent races have been, and because the district system was forced upon us. Again, the more folks you listen to and constructive ideas you consider, the better. But are those opinions what you should base your votes on? Do you serve only the people who live inside the Ojai city limits who can vote for you? Or do you consider the impact of your decisions on our whole community? The people of the whole Ojai Valley? Our neighbors, our friends, our families? I ask these questions based on statements some of you have made in past council meetings. I suggest that each of you should represent every one of us, our whole community. I want to trust that each time you vote, you will base your vote on community input, and more importantly, on your own research, thoughtful consideration of what will create a community that works as well as possible for everyone. a community that works as well as possible for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Elle. Next, we have, can I make a quick comment to Elle?
Elle?
Elle? Elle, Elle.
And just a reminder, council, generally, we don't comment on public comment.
I just wanted to, I'll just comment to here. As we move forward with our whole process, thank you for bringing that up. I think it's very important that we all understand how decisions are made, and I think it's really important that we also have a process for that. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. It is something to discuss for us, for sure. How do we make decisions? Thank you.
Next, we have Colin Jones, then Barry Rabe, and then Bob Kemper.
Colin Jones, East End. Have a little poem about current events. Judge Coats was not fooled. He has cleared both Drucker and Rule. He says they did not violate the Brown Act, that they were merely stating fact. In Ojai, there is a group with a technique that wishes to strangle our ability to speak. To intimidate us into silence is their plan, using frivolous lawsuits, free speech, to ban. But their wicked strategy has failed. Now they're the ones getting nailed. Attorney's fees they must pay. Oh, how they will rue the day when they thought the way was paved to destroy the freedoms we all crave by threatening our First Amendment rights to make us all afraid to fight. For all of this, who is to blame? Who abused the Brown Act without shame? The judge said, in a secret meeting, it was the city council who was cheating. We now know who caused the conflict was Whitman, Lang, and Sticks. The judge said of Whitman's declaration that he misrepresented the truth in his citation. And what of Mr. Summers? Did he not claim that Leslie Rule wrote the Brown Act again and again? That should give you something all to chew when he comes up for his next review. How much time and energy and money has this all cost? How much faith in this council has been lost? How many voters need to be upset before we hear one word of regret? The judge said, in his evaluation, Leslie Rule did not disclose confidential information. Yet you three would not give her two red cents to help her in her defense? Do you feel no shame leaving her alone to take your blame? Mayor, what kind of counsel do you present? You are in this office, and it's our town's lament. And who exactly do you represent? And who and where do you derive consent? Is it simply Ojai that you put first, leaving truth and justice in the dirt? We are all so tired of hearing you three whine while presiding over Ojai's decline. This town of ours will never align until you, you, and you resign. Thank you.
And just a reminder, if you can hold any kind of noise, I'm going to make a statement, and I'm sorry, Barry, just one moment, because I think it's important, then the public needs to hear this. So here's what I think is happening at City Hall. There's a small group of people who, in the last election, supported four candidates who lost two council seats and the mayoral seat. This group chose to engage in unprecedented, unrelenting, and vitriolic negative campaign. They have continued their personal attacks on those with whom they disagree.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask for a point of privilege.
I'm going to ask for a point of, I'm going to ask for a point of, no, I'm going to finish. The public needs to hear this, and I have the floor.
One of the privileges recognized under Rosenberg's, it would be in order to see what the point of privilege is and then deal with it as needed.
What did you just say?
Councilmember Rule called for a point of privilege. Rosenberg acknowledges points of privilege, typically like a personal privilege point. I would suggest that that may be worth resolving.
So I'm going to continue.
I think, no, it's a matter of, for, councilmember Rule.
You have to deal with the point of privilege before you continue.
And I'm not sure what the point of privilege is.
What is your point of privilege?
My point of privilege is, as I recall, you just admonished me and said that we shouldn't be speaking back to public comment, yet here you are not only speaking back on a public comment, you're making a statement. And I think that is out of order. It's inappropriate, and it's not on the agenda.
Well, I would like to, Betsy Sticks', Mayor Betsy Sticks', excuse me.
You're asked about my point of privilege. Mayor Betsy Sticks' declaration of how she sees this is not on the agenda, and it is inappropriate for you to be stating a proclamation. It's inappropriate. And so I'm going to make a motion that we stop this right now. This is not appropriate. It's not on the agenda.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
Yes, I second that.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, let's discuss.
Excuse, we can just vote. Who's in favor of that motion?
The problem is that it feels like you're speaking for all of us.
No, 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 Suzha, there's a motion on the table, so.
Movements allow discussion.
If I could just, if I could just take a moment and remind everyone that Pluto just stationed direct, and that we are headed toward an eclipse, and Mars and Pluto have been square one another. I'm just trying to be unpredictable here.
Okay, well, here's a, there's a motion, and there's a second. We can have discussion eventually. We're going to have a roll call. So you've already had time to give your statement, and.
If you make a statement, then there has to be discussion. It's not possible for you to make this strong of a statement that we don't, then you have to open it up for discussion, and it's going to take a lot of time.
By the time, by the time we have taken more time discussing whether or not she should make a statement, she could have just made the statement.
Okay, let's just vote. Can we have, but let's just vote.
It's a matter of process and procedure, and it is always, it's always.
Excuse me, let's be polite.
You know, process and procedure is good until it comes to you.
I'm going to ask for peace.
That is my problem.
I'm going to ask for the roll call on this motion. We have a motion. Can we have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes. We have a motion by councilmember Rule, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Francina, for Mayor to seize her statement due to the point of privilege. Roll call, Mayor Sticks.
No.
Councilmember Lang.
No.
Councilmember Rule.
Do I get a chance to make a statement? Just vote, please. Yes. I would like to make a statement as well.
Mayor Pro Tem Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
No.
Okay, I'm going to continue, and then we will keep going.
This is the problem right here.
Excuse me, this approach has led to unnecessary and, yes, yes, I can.
God, please not.
Here's what's happening at City Hall.
Point of privilege, again, we have an audience member shouting from the back, which she does.
Excuse me. This approach has led to unnecessary and destructive discord at City Hall. This destructive approach to political discourse is playing out in the U.S. House of Representatives and is being mirrored in communities all over the nation. I went to two workshops at the League of California Cities Conference a few weeks ago in Sacramento, which focused on communication and specifically the toxic political dialogues on social media, print media, and at council meetings. For example, the Sacramento and Ventura City Councils recently banned Zooming due to outrageous and unacceptable comments. Though I put a very high value on the importance of people being able to express dissent at council meetings, the unrelenting personal attacks damage the process and the community. It's painful to be at council meetings. The negativity drives kind and thoughtful people out of the process, and in the long haul, discourages community members from running for office. Who would want to serve on the council if that potentially, if that potentially means continual attacks from a few people who might disagree? The good news for our children is that despite the hostility and several years of delay by the previous city council majority, this council was able to bring forward local climate action that passed with a unanimous vote. Not long after, in an effort to provide relief for Ojai renters whose wages could not come close to keeping up with rent increases, I introduced rent stabilization that passed with a vote three to two. I vote in support of what I believe is in the best interest of our community. Could I have quiet, please? Sometimes special interests don't like that. We can, though, all be the change we want to see in the world by moving forward, stop questioning colleagues and community members' motives, and practice unconditional, excuse me, quiet, please, quiet, unconditional positive regard. Each of us has a responsibility to lead with compassion, not fear, and stop the attacking so that we can work together. The finger pointing is the problem. It's time to be part of the solution. We need to work together for a better future for our children. Thank you for listening. And thank you, Mr. Rabe, for your patience. You are next.
Yeah, I have a quick question to the city attorney. Did we just amend the agenda in order to have the mayor make a statement? This was not a response. This was a statement. This was a page and a half type statement. That's not on the agenda. So this is a violation of process right off the bat. So did, is that what we did? We said that we are amending the agenda so that the mayor can actually make a statement? Is that what we just did? What did we just do? Did we just, the mayor just decided that she had the right to make a statement? It's not on the agenda. It's not Rosenberg's rules. We're not following process and procedure. So my question to you is, what did we just do?
The Brown Act allows councilmembers to provide a brief response to statements of members of the public at general public comment. My understanding of what the council has just done is that the majority admittedly by a three to two vote, allowed the mayor to provide a brief response to a member of the public's comments at public comment.
So, so I just want to be.
Thus, there was not a violation of the Brown Act.
Okay, I want to be very clear. This was a brief response to a public comment that was typed out, that was written, and that was a page and a half. Let's be really clear about what just occurred, and I will leave it at that. This is, this is, once again, shameful.
Mr., and just a reminder to council that we are practicing unconditional positive regard, and let's not, oh, excuse me.
Mayor Sticks?
Could you all show some decorum and civility and stay quiet? We have Barry Rabe, council, mayor pro tem.
Mayor Sticks, the problem is that you make these statements when someone speaks against you and your beliefs. I have never heard you make a statement when your boyfriend came to the podium and said all those things about me. You know, there's a double standard and hypocrisy. I love your good qualities, but wait, there one, I want to say this. You know, we're scheduled to stop public comments at the half-hour mark, and there is no item two. So I think for tonight, let's air, let's have the public continue, let's not interrupt, since we are, since we able to, since we seem to be able to make up the rules as we go along, you know, let's, this half-hour rule cannot possibly apply. Because we've taken up the public's time.
Why don't we? Let's keep going. Barry, excuse me, Mr. Jones, could you please be quiet? Next, we have Barry Rabe. Let's, Mr. Rabe?
My name is Barry Rabe. I'm a long-term resident of the Ojai community, with family inside and outside of the city limits. Three members of this council have repeatedly blamed the council's dysfunction upon Leslie Rule for disclosing protected information from closed session. Mrs. Rules, Ms. Rule's attorney, John Drucker, asserted in January of this year that the information she disclosed was not confidential because it was outside the scope of the closed session agenda. The three-member majority of the Ojai City Council nevertheless voted against indemnifying Leslie Rule against a slap lawsuit, arguing she brought it upon herself by her disclosures. Betsy Sticks and Andrew Whitman actually wanted the city to sue her, and they voted to exclude Leslie Rule from being present for their discussion. By voting to abandon Ms. Rule, the council majority supported the plaintiffs in their attempt to intimidate Mr. Drucker and Ms. Rule. Councilmember Whitman went further actively supporting the lawsuit with a letter that brought him a well-earned smackdown from the judge for misrepresenting the truth. The judge's recent decision tossing the slap lawsuit confirms that Mr. Drucker was absolutely right. It finds that the information disclosed by Leslie Rule was not protected under the Brown Act. Judge Coats also notes the irony of trying to use the Brown Act, which is intended to ensure openness and encourage public participation, to withhold important information from the public. Let that soak in. The city council violated the Brown Act repeatedly, exactly as John Drucker, common sense of Ventura County District Attorney, and now a Superior Court judge told them they did. So this city council's dysfunction didn't result from Leslie Rule's disclosures. It stemmed from Mayor Sticks's double dealing and deceit. She worked behind her colleagues' backs with Leslie Hess and Tom Francis of Simply Ojai to betray the elected supermajority of the prior city council. They then supported candidates they expected to be deferential to them so that they could force-feed the city Simply Ojai's agenda. The successful result was a majority that misunderstood, disrespected, and abused the Brown Act. In the case of Mayor Sticks and Andrew Whitman, the result was a master's class in petty vengeance and abuse of power. Their behavior and the judge's ruling in this slap lawsuit demonstrate the critical necessity of recording future closed-session meetings so that they can be reviewed in the district attorney's office when there's a dispute about compliance with the Brown Act. On a positive note, Rachel Lang sometimes broke with Betsy Sticks and Andrew Whitman to do the decent thing. Suzha Francina consistently and courageously tried to put a stop to the nonsense. Leslie Rule refused to be intimidated, but Betsy Sticks and Andrew Whitman, as Joseph Welch said to Joe McCarthy, "Have you no sense of decency? With all you have done to poison the very soul of Ojai, you owe it to the community to apologize and to listen to and learn from those who disagree with you, starting now."
Thank you, Barry. Next, we have Bob, quiet, please. Next, we have Bob Kemper, then William Wyrick, and then Robin Gerber.
Excuse me, I have a point of privilege again. So Colin Jones is asking to come up and respond to your statement, which seemed to be addressed to him as it was a response to a public comment. So we need to take that under consideration. I would make a motion to give him time to respond. It was, your response was ostensibly to, in response to his poem, so he would like to come up. I would make a motion.
I'll second that.
As we have given many people over the time to come up, so.
Okay, is there, there's a second? Is there a roll call, please, Weston?
Mayor Pro Tem Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Abstain.
Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, we have Bob Kemper.
So, I apologize if you don't like my tone. In the past, I have not come to these meetings to speak because I had no problem. I had no issue. I come now before because I see injustice here in this city. And if my tone is strong, then I apologize. But tell me, Betsy, anything in here that I lied about, anything in here that's untrue about what you're doing, and about what happened with the slap lawsuit. I am not up here spreading misinformation. What I am doing up here is trying to bring some sense to you guys, hoping that you will see some sense. You're just beyond the pale. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Next, we have Bob Kemper, then William Wyrick, and then Robin Gerber.
Hi, I thought it was hard act to follow. Bob Kemper, I'm an Ojai resident. It's been months since I've been here. I frankly stayed away because I just simply got tired of the nonsense that was going on here, basically following the Simply Ojai doctrine and agenda. But the reason I'm here tonight is that I was so appalled when reading the text of Mr. Whitman's Declaration. And as I read that, and I won't go to the trouble of reading the whole thing here, but I will leave a copy here for the record, if that's okay, put that into record. I was shocked when I read it, and my previous individual read it, parts of it as well, but he says it also possible that councilmember Rule's disclosure of confidential information was an effort to carry further favor with the developer. This type of leak is a breach of councilmember's legal rule, ethical responsibilities, blah, 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 blah. So what happened with all of this? And then he goes on to talk about disadvantages and injuries triggered by councilmember Rule's failure to maintain confidentiality, et cetera, et cetera. I think what's most telling is what the judge said, and I quote, "The court notes," and this is page eight of 10, "The court notes that Mr. Whitman, in his declaration under penalty of perjury, misrepresented the letter from the district attorney by stating that it was issued to councilmember Rule and that advised her that the disclosure she made violated the confidentiality of closed sessions provisions of the Brown Act. In truth, the letter was issued to the entire city council as a cease and desist demand," blah, 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 blah. He goes on to state, excuse me for delay, on page nine of 10, that it is ironic that. He goes on to state, excuse me for delay, on page nine of 10, that "it is ironic that the Brown Act, which is intended to ensure openness and encourage participation by the general public in government business, is being used here, here, in an attempt to withhold important information from the public. Public officials have a general duty to keep the public informed about public business." So, we heard it from the district attorney, we've heard it from the judge in this particular ruling, you've heard it from a whole lot of people that come up here and talk. It's not one or two people that are complaining. It's about the discourse here and the way in which this city council is being run, and unfortunately, you, Mayor Sticks, you, Councilman Whitman, and most of the time, you, Ms. Lang, going along with Simply Ojai.
Thank you, Bob. Next, we have William Wyrick, then Robin Gerber, then DeeDee Dorskyn-Lavey.
As a council, you are collectively responsible for two people, the city attorney and the city manager. You rely on these people for advice and good direction. I would suggest that you have a situation here where the city attorney has failed to properly advise council about proper conduct of closed sessions and the proper application of the Brown Act. He hasn't had your back, in other words. You haven't been able to rely on his advice. He consistently promoted the view that anything discussed in closed sessions, whether fitting into the strict Brown Act exceptions or not, was strictly and legally confidential. He actively attempted to silence Councilperson Rule's attempt to make appropriate disclosures regarding violations of the Brown Act, including failing to advise her of proper procedures for appealing his attempt to suppress these disclosures. That's a long process, and as a result, the Ventura County District Attorney issued a cease and desist recommendation, maybe arguably a directive to this council. Also as a result, arguably, plaintiffs, listening to these repeated statements, were arguably drawn into a lawsuit against Councilperson Rule, which has now been ruled by a Superior Court Judge to be frivolous, without merit, and dismissed with these plaintiffs now at risk for substantial legal costs. I really feel badly if they were misled. This same ruling specifically stipulated that Councilperson Rule's disclosures were illegal in direct contradiction to City Attorney Summers' public statements. This council needs to consider whether or not it can trust and rely on the quality of City Attorney Summers' advice and direction going forward. A performance review for City Attorney Summers is overdue. I think it's been more than a year. I could be corrected on that, and should be scheduled at the earliest opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Robin Gerber, then DeeDee Dorskyn-Lavey, and then Brad Tabak Bank.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Robin Gerber. I live here in Ojai. The frivolous lawsuit against Leslie Rule and her attorney has been silently dismissed, as we've heard. A Ventura County Superior Court Judge found that she did not violate the Brown Act. Leslie Rule knew that what she heard in closed sessions should have been public. She has braved a lot of abuse for doing the right thing and informing us, the voters, and, I'm sorry, informing us, the voters, of what the public had a right to know. Her colleagues should trust her more, not less. We voters hope you all act with integrity. Sadly, Mr. Whitman, you have done the opposite. You made a sworn declaration to the court supporting the failed lawsuit against Rule. Shockingly, shockingly for me, an attorney, the judge reprimanded you for misrepresenting facts in that declaration. This is a serious allegation against any lawyer, an embarrassment for our town and this council, and no way to create trust. But, Mr. Whitman, you also defamed Leslie Rule, stating with absolutely no evidence that she was trying to curry favor with developers by revealing closed-session statements. Leslie wouldn't know a developer if they were dancing on this dais right now. But what kind of person, much less attorney, puts an unfounded, libelous statement in a sworn court declaration, as you did? We don't need that kind of divisive behavior on this council. I'm hopeful the council can build on the court decision, which has laid to rest this continued controversy about the Brown Act. More healing and cooperation are needed, as you, Ms. Lang, often say. An apology from you, Mr. Whitman, for your libel and the bullying and the vulgar attacks on Susan and Leslie, well, it's long overdue, isn't it? Those words are no longer protected by the phony claims of confidentiality. This court decision should allow you to all move beyond these last 10 months and strive for more honesty and trust towards each other and towards the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Next, we have DeeDee Dorskyn-Lavey, Levy, sorry, and then Brad Tabak Bank.
I'm DeeDee Dorskyn. I am a constituent in Mr. Whitman's district. First, I'd like to say ditto to Robin Gerber, ditto to Colin Jones, ditto to Barry Rabe, and ditto to Bill Wyrick. But I am asking, and more or less pleading with you, Mr. Whitman, that Councilmember Whitman, to resign and save face. I will give you the courtesy of resigning because you're going to put us through a recall, and it's not a pretty situation. I'm one of the ones that's suffering from no sewer lines and leaky septic tanks and water that's contaminated. You have done nothing for our district. You claim you've done things, but you actually have done nothing for us. And in your statement today that you quote-unquote said, "Please don't sign the petition," I'm begging you to save your dignity and resign. And as far as Mr. Summers goes, you should do the same. You should ask your firm to let you be replaced with somebody that knows the law. You misled our city council, and you have misled it to a point where you did damage to one of our members and to an attorney. And you should step back. And Mayor Sticks, enough is enough. We're not out to get you. You're out to get us. You are not following the rules of the law. And I'm still hopeful that there is hope for Rachel to really be herself and independent of the two of you. But, Mr. Whitman, I am begging you, keep your dignity and your pride and resign. Thank you.
Thank you, DeeDee. Next, we have Brad Tabak Bank.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brad Tabak Bank. I am a resident of Ojai. This is the first time I've spoken in front of this body. It's a very short issue. My recollection is that this whole thing started as a result of an opinion of council that was presented in a closed session. The court has ruled that that was not proper, and I'm now calling for release of that memorandum. It is no longer protected. I'm sure Mr. Summers knows this. It is, I'm also an attorney. I'm sure Mr. Summers knows that under Code Section, and let me pull this up, Government Code Section 54956.9D states, "For the purposes of this chapter, all expressions of the lawyer-client privilege, other than those provided in this section, are hereby abrogated. This section is the exclusive expression of lawyer-client privilege for the purposes of conducting closed session." Since the court has ruled that it was, this issue was taken up improperly in closed session, there's no longer an attorney-client privilege held, and I'm asking for the release to the general public of the memorandum received in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. All right, we will stop closed, public comment at this point. We'll return to the others. No, we had a half an hour, so then we...
May I make a motion? Because it's my understanding, remember when I made that motion to close the meeting? I mean, to end the meeting at 11 o'clock?
Yes.
And you told me that if a council, a council majority can change the rules.
On top of that, yes, so you can make a motion to amend the agenda to allow general public comment to continue?
Yes.
With a second and majority vote, that would control.
Okay. I want to make a motion that we allow public comments to continue, especially since we pulled item two from the agenda, so we don't have to go to item two. It's been pulled.
Okay, I'm just, we agreed as a council to do the rest of the public remainder after we do one item?
Yes, but I'm asking, I'm changing that because we also agreed as a council not to bring new items on the agenda after 10:30. We have, so that's just a fact. And so, you changed it that night, and so, I'm doing the same thing.
Okay, no, but we, but just a reminder to the public, we voted as a council to do it this way. You made a motion. Is there a second for this motion?
Yes, we're going to vote.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. I'm just asking.
Yeah, could we have quiet in the audience? So, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Sticks.
Sure, it's fine with me, yep.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Abstain.
And once again, I would like members of our community to please practice civility and compassion, and if you could just refrain from making comments, that would be appropriate. Thank you. Next, we have Lee Heineman, then Jeff Schneider, and then Larry Steingold.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. The fall is a time to shed our old ways. It's the start of renewal. We, the Ojai Valley citizens, are preparing to facilitate a transition of our city council members in order for our community to flourish. Let's look at a couple of the mistakes this council made this past year. This is my understanding of events over the past year. Granted, it's been very confusing. One, Matthew Summers, you gave bad advice to this council, resulting in a huge waste of council's time, community's time, not to mention money. I don't know how much it was, but huge. Betsy Sticks, it appears, it appears, you collaborated with Sabrina Venskas to push forward an undisclosed agenda. I've mentioned this a few times. I've never heard anything back. Correcting that. Correct me, please, if I'm wrong, but that's what it's looked like. Andrew Whitman, your stand against Leslie Rule, who's your colleague, that prompted the start of the splintering of this council, the way I've viewed it. It culminated in a hugely expensive lawsuit, and again, all these people's time. And Rachel Lang, you voted against having the council fund Leslie's legal defense for this meritless lawsuit. I don't understand why you did that. I don't know where you are, but I have high hopes, though, for you, Rachel, that you can stand in your own integrity instead of the shadow of a couple of those who are misguiding you. We live in times of great division. This city council has mimicked the greater political climate of our country, one of divisiveness. Interestingly enough, a large portion of the community have come together, Republicans, Democrats, independents, non-party people, coming together as a collective, looking at the dysfunction and the non-transparency of this council. We have become united, oddly enough, so perhaps mistakes made served a greater good, one of unifying Ojai. A nation divided against itself cannot stand. Abraham Lincoln.
Thank you, Lee. And I would love to go over the truth with you because the word that you use, appears, so could we go for coffee and talk about it? Okay, thank you. Next, we have Jeff Schneider, and then Larry Steingold.
Counsel, citizens, though you denied any wrongdoing, Judge Coats determined that you violated the Brown Act three times, despite the embarrassing fact that you have a lawyer on the council and a city attorney at your disposal, who should have been able to steer you towards the truth. But no, instead, you resorted to blaming John Drucker and Leslie Rule. Judge Coats exonerated their behavior and statements. Now, an honorable person in your position would apologize and probably step down. I don't expect that to happen. It's too bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Next, we have Larry Steingold, then Wendy Larnar, and then Renee Roth.
Larry Steingold, resident. Nothing is personal here. It's all about business. It's everybody's behavior, your actions, your comments, and your motives. If I was sitting there, I would expect the same treatment from them, too. Okay, we deserve what we get. You give, you get. Also, a moment of silence for 40 babies that were executed, butchered, today, last week, a couple of days ago. But something more simple. The Lavender Festival was last year. This, two weeks from now, is Ojai days. Have we done anything about buses, tour buses? Has there anything been changed on the books? Because I know there was a big to-do immediately after the Lavender Festival because the buses were everywhere. Can you instruct the chief of police for this, that weekend, to say, "Hey, all the tour buses go to one lot"? That means buses over 12 people or 13 people, all of them. Can you do that for one weekend, an emergency ordinance, and then actually have something on the books? It would be nice. Because otherwise, we're going to have a lot of buses here, and we're going to be back at the same place we were last year with the same problem. 12 buses, 15 buses loading people, all spending money. Great, park somewhere else. Okay, also, the Ojai Unified School District is meeting tomorrow about chaperone. Have you people set up a meeting with them to discuss what's going to be happening? Because we're going to get sandbagged when they present you people with a, excuse me, present us with a fait accompli. They're going to be building this, 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 and this, and we don't have a clue. So, we should really stick our oar in the water or stick in their spokes, one or the other. Either work with them or do something to whatever they want to do. The valet, the parking, it's like, anyway, I'm more concerned about good governance, right? I want the roads paved, great, everything's working, toilets are fixed, roofs fixed, things moving, good governance, that's all. Just make, but make sure we can pay for it or have other people pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
May I briefly respond about the buses?
Yes, it's just, Mayor, it's not on the agenda, so we cannot discuss it.
But we have, we do have, we have an emergency ordinance.
Yeah, the council adopted an ordinance last summer that is still on the books and still in effect. In summarizing, it requires large tour buses, I forget the exact trigger, but you know, your bigger buses, to park at a designated location as determined by the police chief, which typically, last time around, was Soul Park. We'll have to confirm with the chief in Public Works whether they're going to park this time around. But we have an ordinance on the books that requires the larger tour buses to not pick up and drop off passengers on Ojai Avenue and to park at a designated location.
Wonderful. Also, there was a company with three black buses there a couple of nights ago, big, not 12-passenger, but like 24-passenger, loading up on the street. So, if they can do that, too, maybe we can reduce the size of the buses that are required to be stored.
Through the council, that can be looked at. And I would suggest, if you or anyone else sees a Wildcat tour bus, to call the non-emergency number at the police station, and that can be looked into.
Or just stop over and leave a note.
Thank you, Larry. Next, we have Wendy Larnar, then Renee Roth, and then Jeffrey Starkweather.
Good evening. I'm Wendy Larnar, and I'm a resident and citizen of Ojai. I'm taking a chance that I'm free to say, thank God, at least some justice was served by last week's judicial decision. week's judicial decision. However, the majority of this council, with the poor advice of the city attorney, voted to restrict my free speech on March 14th, 2023, and others have been denied by the same abuse of power. We were making references to occurrences that were publicly known because of a validated eyewitness report of misconduct that occurred during the closed session of the city council. Actually, sessions, plural. Our concern in this matter has been vindicated, but even if that were not the case, if a private citizen wants to speak to the content of a closed session, there is nothing I can find in the Brown Act that allows said person to be gavelled down, nor have their civil right denied by a public body's vote. You actually voted to deny a citizen's right to speak. If such practices go unchallenged, the rights that protect our liberty are compromised. It is a more critical issue than housing, or elephant rights, or valet parking. I pray you all take note, especially the officer of the court who counsels you. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Next, we have Renee Roth, then Jeffrey Starkweather, and then Nora Harold.
May I ask a question? Do we have a lot of cards left?
We have four cards left, and then zoom.
Okay. That's manageable, I think. Otherwise, we can limit to two minutes.
Good evening, City Council. I want to thank many people who have spoken up here. I really appreciate a lot of the comments. Barry, and I can't remember everybody's names right now, I'm thinking, but, you know, there, there were, there were a lot of people concerned and about this legal decision that just came about. And we were relieved. I have to tell you, I was almost able to go to sleep that night, joyous and happy, and feeling that trust had been restored for our city and our town as a result of reading that opinion. There has been so much deception, Betsy Sticks and Mr. Whitman. Now, I want to set the record straight right now, so there aren't rumors spread about what Renee Roth is doing as a proponent for the recall petition for Mr. Whitman. I have a copy in my hand right now of the recall petition for Mr. Whitman. We had signatures in the paper in the last Ojai Valley News edition, and this, I am now officially, I, I met with Weston this, this afternoon, and I am now officially a proponent of your recall, Mr. Whitman. Now, I have no animosity toward you. I think you are a good man. Your family is a good family. You come from a good place. I honestly believe that in my heart. But we have not seen the honesty and the respect that I was expecting when I also ran for city council. I ran in the seat that you won, and I congratulated you and said, thank you. Good job. Way to go. I do not want to be a member of the city council. I did not run a dirty campaign. I did not say deceitful information about you at all. I never did. I would, I didn't know you. And I know your brother, and your brother has got a lot of respect in town. I do not want to be on the city council. I am so glad I avoided and dodged that bullet, and did not have to sit on this body, and have to witness all the, the discussions and terrible things that have happened. So I just want you to know, Mr. Whitman, you're in a tough spot. We are filing a petition to recall you, and I believe that we may win, and I hope we do. But if you want to resign, good on you. Way to go.
Thank you, Renee. Next, we have Jeffrey Starkweather, then Nora Harold, and then Janine.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, citizens particularly. First, I want to apologize myself, because I think apologies sometimes are needed. I was viciously attacked by members of this board, falsely, but I lost my cool a little bit. I got angry, as not the way I normally behave. I don't believe in being angry. I don't believe in being revengeful. I don't believe in holding grudges. And so I went out for a long hike the other day, listened to Bob Dylan's Forever Young, and it just inspired what I'm really about, which is about trying to solve solutions for everyone and involve everyone. I would also add that when the election, because I think there's a false premise being put here, that somehow there's some group that's resentful about the election. That was not the position of those of us who ran, ran campaigns, and I didn't run any false accusations, and I didn't accuse anybody personally. I went on your record, Ms. Mayor, and what was in the documents. No, I didn't accuse anybody. But I thought, since the race was close, that we would actually have elected officials who tried to rule for everybody. And Rachel knows, I met with her and talked about collaboration, and I have not seen that. I have not seen that. I want to ditto what all the people have said about the closed-door meetings. I want to remind people what this was actually about. Back in October, the mayor received an email from Tom Francis saying, "Our candidates, who have agreed to get rid of the Becker agreement, are in trouble. We need to get out and get votes, so when we get in office, we can overturn this thing." That's what those closed meetings were about. They were about trying to convince Rachel Lang to go along with you two to rescind the Becker agreement. Otherwise, there would be no reason to be spending $30,000 if you were going to go for a referendum anyway. In addition, I would point out that we can't trust now the, at least two of the members of the city council to actually follow the brand-up, because you don't even agree that you actually broke it. It's kind of like the kid who goes into his parents' cookie jar and goes into his room to eat the cookie when he's not supposed to, and there's crumbs all along, and his mother comes up to him and says, "You, you did what you weren't supposed to do. You got the cookies." And the person says, "Oh, no, I didn't. I didn't eat the cookies." And he says, "Johnny, you've got to follow the rules." He says, "Well, I will follow them on the rule, but I didn't take the cookies." We cannot trust you guys to follow the rules, because you haven't admitted that you took the cookies. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Next, we have Nora Harold, and then Janine.
Bye, Leslie. Every time. Hi, Nora Harold. I live in Miners Oaks. I don't know what to say right now, other than, our city deserves better than all of that. Our city deserves better than all of that. We live in a beautiful place. We're so fortunate to be here. And I hear people angry, and I think, I, I don't really think you even know what you're angry about, and we have elected.
I'm going to ask people to practice decorum and civility. If you could stay silent and be respectful.
Can I have my time back?
Yep, yeah, you want to?
James, in the back, please restart three minutes.
And just a reminder, everyone, if you could stay silent so we could hear the speaker, thank you. Just one second, Nora. Let's wait for silence.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So you all are demonstrating right now exactly what I'm talking about. I started to talk about my love of this valley, and the anger that is very present right now in our society, and it's everywhere. Mayor Sticks tried to speak about that anger, and how it seeped into every political space in our country. And it has. And you all think you're fighting a fight, and I see it as something different altogether. We are in a moment of accelerated change in this country. All of our systems are being upended. All of our systems are showing the dysfunction clearly in front of us. And we have these five elected officials up here, with a manager, and a lawyer, and their helpers, doing the best you all can to navigate your way through a period of time unlike any that we've ever experienced before in this lifetime. And it's hard. And it doesn't really have to do with Drucker and his emails sent out to everyone that fomented all of this hatred against councilmember Whitman, which is exactly what just happened. But that's not what this is really about. Everyone feels powerless. We're all feeling powerless right now, because this reality, by and large, except for a very small privileged few, sucks. It's hard. It's hard every second. We don't have health care. We don't have enough housing. We don't have roads that work. We don't have structures that work. Our school system is falling apart here, our public schools, due to lack of enrollment, because of financial issues, because we don't take care of each other. So I'm going to commend you all. Shut up. Seriously.
Please be quiet, everyone. Continue, Nora.
Yeah, I am angry. That was a boundary violation, and that's what anger is for. You violate my boundaries. I will express my anger. That's how it works. Put the dog on a leash.
Quiet, please. You know.
Madam, Madam Mayor, perhaps we allow Ms. Harold to finish, and then a recess.
Yeah. You want me to take a break?
We're all going to take a break.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Okay. We will take a short break, and we will be back. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, we're back. If you could take your seats and we will begin, please. Okay. Uh, if everyone could take your seats and come to quiet, we will resume with Nora Harold.
Nora, she's still talking. I just came up here to take a breath and again, tell you I appreciate you all, even you Councilmember rule, because this is a hard job. Who leaves every time I come up to speak? Watching everyone infantilize Councilmember Lang feels really problematic to me. So I, I just wanted to comment on that. And then the conspiracy theories again about Mayor Sticks and Simply Ojai. Okay, Mayor Sticks does not work for or with Simply Ojai. Period. To hear Tom Francis's name and to hear all that come up again and again. And if I'm not mistaken, Tom Francis was the campaign manager for Johnny Johnston on both of his campaigns. Can someone just nod the assent? Right. Tom Francis was the campaign manager for Johnny Johnston on both of his campaigns. And I don't believe once that we ever heard he was Johnny Johnston's puppet master. This is misogyny again. Andy, I appreciate you. I want you to keep your seat. I want you to do good for this valley. Suzha, Betsy, Rachel, Leslie, I want you to keep your seats and do good for this valley. Matthew, thank you for your work. I want you to keep that seat, continue to do good for this valley and Mark, for as long as we have you. Same.
Thank you, Nora. Next we have Janine.
Good evening. Janine Isen, homeowner. Um, I saw you a month ago, September 12th, and I told you how you went ahead of my Bravo viewings on Tuesday. You moved ahead of the, the New York Housewives. The whole year because it was so dramatic. And I voiced my concerns about the Brown Act violation. Now, what we just saw happen here, this is messy. This is really messy. And if something doesn't get cleaned up, it's going to continue. I would hope to think that Ojai would be a blue zone for our aging population, that we would, we could broadcast that we have all these centarians, right? Because we play pickleball, we're in the sunshine, we have volunteer, it helps the extension of lives. Yet here we are yelling, being rude. And why? Because of a Brown Act violation. And, and I take offense to, you deserve better than all of this. Well, all of this didn't happen for no reason. Leslie, thank you. Thank you for having the courage. Okay? You guys are a team. I don't trust you right now. I actually got, I was going to call in to this meeting, but what had happened before about the statement literally threw on my coat and drove straight down here. And I'd like to say that I agree ditto, 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 ditto. And unfortunately, I'm sorry, Nora, I don't agree with your opinions, but every other speaker before me loved the poem. Something needs to happen. Sanitation? You know, you offered to have coffee with somebody? I'd like you to have coffee with everybody. Because you sat in front of my house asking for my vote and we had a very good conversation about a few years ago. And I'll tell you, I'm disappointed because some of the things that you said that you would do didn't happen. And now this whole Brown Act violation and, you know, Andrew Whitman, I don't know, did you ever apologize to speaking to these women that way in those closed sessions? Did you- But did you ever apologize to Leslie? Okay. So, you know, I hear misogyny and everything, it's like, okay, we need to, we need to heal. And the only way we heal is that we look at the sore, we look at the, what's going on, rip the Band-Aid off, look at it, and slowly start putting some ointment, slowly start healing and putting us back together. Because this is a beautiful community and I would hate for it to get so keeping, so divisive and so ugly.
Thank you, Janine. Would you like to have coffee? No, I mean, would you like to go out to coffee? Okay, would you-
But I would like you to do that forever.
I'm hap- but I would, will you email me at the, or I can get your number afterwards.
I, I just would like you to offer an open forum so that you can actually for once just address this stuff, right? Let's just put this stuff to bed. But the only way we're going to do that is we have a conversation, we talk about it, and we look at what really happened. You know, because Leslie can't be the only one that went, you know, I mean, that's horrible what, what happened. It's horrible. And that we sued her.
And I'm happy to get together with you individually if you'd like that.
I don't want individual, I'd rather have it a group of all interest, ev- everyone. Because when it becomes individual, then it's just me and you in some room and you're telling me whatever, whatever. I want you to publicly have an open forum discussion, all of you.
Okay, and that is what we are doing tonight too, here? Yeah.
But I, I mean on these Brown Act violations. I mean on what just happened. The divisiveness, this behavior of what just happened to our city, this is caused by misleading of the, the Brown Act, right?
Thank you. Uh, any, anyone online?
Yes, Mayor, we have one raised hand for general public comments, Jerry Schwenke. Mr. Schwenke, you have the floor? Give one more chance.
Here we go, here we go. Um, hi, I'm Jerry Schwenke. I live in the city of Ojai. There's been a lot said here tonight that I am not really at liberty to address as things stand right now. But I will say, um, just a couple of brief things. Um, I've heard the sanitation issue come up a couple of times. You know, I was on the crew that upgraded the Ojai sanitation system so that it could be turned over to the Ojai Valley Sanitary District. That would have been about 37 or 38 years ago. And so anybody who is complaining that the city council isn't taking care of their sanitary, uh, there are sanitary problems here in the city, I'm suggesting that you're being told who to be angry at by somebody, you know, because you're speaking out of ignorance. You don't know who's responsible for what. And I see a lot of that, that anger here and that dissatisfaction. People are angry all over the place and a lot of them aren't even sure what they're angry about. But there are other people who are willing to tell them what they're angry about and direct that anger, uh, for political purposes. And I've seen a lot of that happen here tonight and it's a shame. It really is a shame. So I guess that's all I got to say, thanks.
Thank you, Jerry.
No more raised hands for general public comment.
Okay, all right, thank you, Weston. Uh, we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, but I would like to pull item J.
J, okay.
I'll second.
Microphone, please.
Okay, um, all right. Is there a motion to approve everything other than J?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve everything other than J.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, we'll take public comment first though, because we have, uh, on J, N, E, and L.
Madam Mayor, I suggest taking the public comment on all but J first, then take J after we hear from the, from Mayor Pecan Fincino.
First, we have Larry Steinhold on E and Larry Steinhold on L.
Thank you. Um, regarding the preparation of bank reconciliations, if Mr. Scott could, it says preparation of bank reconciliations from June 23rd back to 2022 October, preparation. And then it says in the process of performing, is performing the same as preparing? No, I know, I'm ser- because either that or they've been preparing to balance the books and now they're being paid to actually balance the books. And that's the way I read it. I'm not, I'm just curious because it says prepare, then it says balance, uh, process, and then it's from July 23rd backwards. But if they've been hired from June 23rd back, shouldn't they already be doing that?
I don't know the answer to your question. I'd be making it up if I tried to answer. These are, these are people that we hire because this city finds it easier to save money without paying a lot of people high salaries-
Subcontract.
High overhead, medical insurance, retirement insurance. And we bring these people in each year to, to finish the auditing work that needs to be finished to get the audit ready for, for completion. This is something that's done every year. Carl, I know you've been working on this item. Do you, is there anything you can add to that?
Yeah, correct. So it's the bank reconciliations through July-
2023.
That is correct.
Right.
Which is required to go one year past and, or one month past into the fiscal year for the audit purposes.
Right, but that, but they've been hi- they were hired June 23rd for the preparation of bank reconciliations dating back to October 2022-
Correct.
To prepare for the annual audit, that probably didn't happen in 2022. But now they're already, and they're already engaged in the process of performing the bank reconciliations through July 23rd, but they were hired June 23rd, June 20- In other words, it's like, are they doing-
It's, just so I can clarify, it's one company-
Right, I understand.
-that's familiar with our processes and our financial software. They're previously hired under a different contract, not this one, to do previous bank recs. That contract is done, it's spent, this is an amendment to extend it to go through July.
Are you worried that we're paying somebody twice for the same work?
No, I'm just curious is that-
What's the worry here?
There's no worry. They were hired to prepare to balance and now they're being paid to actually do the balance. In other words, it's somebody watching the store. If no, if they're the only company that's watching reconciliations, right?
The finance director is involved with that.
Fine.
Carl is involved with that. I, I couldn't begin to tell you the nitty gritty of how bank reconciliations-
Well, I, it's, you know, it's incoming outgo. I mean, it's balances.
Yeah, you could, we can put you into a room with the finance director and she can walk you through how all of that works.
Great, thank you. I look forward to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Should I follow, Carl, should I follow?
And you have another item, Larry, that you wanted to talk, uh, L?
There is no L.
Oh, okay, well.
Did you mean J?
That's an L. Okay, all right, well, we will move on to, uh, we have th-
Madam Mayor, we need a vote on item, if that's the last, is that the last commenter on-
Yep.
A through I, then we need a vote on A through I.
Okay, motion to approve?
And I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, great. All right, we will look at, uh, item J. We have three public comments. First, Elle Caldwell, then Jeffrey Starkweather, and then Renee Roth.
I'd like to hear the public comments first, is that okay?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yep, Elle Caldwell, then Jeffrey Starkweather, and then Renee Roth.
I'm, I'm here to ask you not to pass this ordinance. I'm here to ask you to let the planning commission do their job evaluating individual projects on their merit and val- and on their merit and value to the community with processes already in place. Please stop using your valuable time and energy on unneeded legislation when so much work is needed on other issues, especially on housing. Please do not bend to yet another lawsuit threat to accommodate people who can afford to make those lawsuits, who have the means to litigate to try to force you to legislate to assuage their demands. If you do that, you are setting a precedent for folks with the means to sue to use that means to control you. If you do bend, if you do not bend and they continue their suit, how likely is it they would win? It took three attempts to get a recent petition's technical details passed by the city clerk's office. That sets quite a precedence for our city clerk's insistence on technicalities on petitions being very correct. This litigious group might end up required to pay the city's legal expenses if they lose. That's a good chance they would. Finally, just in case they continue with these attempts, you might want to add a line item in the city budget for fighting further attempts to control you in this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Elle. Next we have Jeffrey Starkweather, then Renee Roth.
Thank you, uh, Jeffrey Starkweather again. It's been 18 months now since this issue was brought before the city council by the mayor. And I've probably spoken on it way too many times, so I'll try to be brief. Uh, I think we're being blackmailed by a lawsuit, which I think we could simply win because, uh, and it wouldn't be very expensive because the rules are clear, they clearly violated them. I've had to go through those rules over and over again recently. And when you miss a deadline that is stated there, you've got to turn in your proof of publication within certain many days. That's clear. I, it's red letter or black letter, excuse me, uh, maybe it's red letter. And I just think we could win this lawsuit very simply. That's the first thing we should do. The second thing is we're solving a problem that doesn't exist and will never exist. There's no, there was never a problem with valet parking and causing traffic. Valet parking everywhere is used as a tool to prevent traffic problems. Uh, it's a tool for sustainability, so we don't, people spend probably maybe 20 minutes, excuse me, 20% of people who are driving in a downtown are looking for parking spaces. And valet parking solves that problem. I don't believe there is a business in downtown Ojai that has enough customers, enough money that they can afford to buy a lot and then valet park for people. So we're solving a problem that doesn't exist. Besides, we already regulate it and the planning commission, or excuse me, the parking committee came up with a reasonable regulation. That's what we should be going through the planning process. The comparison of this with the formula business is turning it on its head. Formula business was promoted by the business, they were consulted, and it went through the planning process. This one is anti-business and it's not going through the planning process and is top-down by the threat of a small group. I think that we need to be, we may be not wasting so mu- this is what I'd call a virtue signaling, a political statement. we need to be, we may be not wasting so much, this is what I'd call a virtue signaling, a political statement issue, because there's no real issue here, and yet we're trying to solve it. And I would say Mr. Whitman's attempt to be compromising was exactly the opposite. Eventually, he created a zone that includes the entire downtown. That's a ban on parking where we might need it, if we ever did. So I would ask you to not approve this ordinance, to go ahead and fight this lawsuit and start working with the planning department and the planners commission on a reasonable ordinance that could regulate valet parking, like the parking committee came forward to you several months back. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Next, we have Renee Roth.
Thank you, Jeffrey, and L Caldwell, for your very thoughtful remarks. You know, I've submitted remarks on this and sent them to Weston several times. And this has come before the city council, seven meetings, maybe, eight meetings. And I've said and talked to people in the community who were saying, what is this valet parking thing? Ladies at my church on Sunday said, what is the deal with valet parking? Why is the city spending so much time on valet parking? We don't have a valet parking issue. Nobody, we don't use it. We don't need it. So I agree with the previous speakers, but what I'm really wanting to say is that I believe that this is a bad faith effort to try to control and manipulate our city council by the likes of Tom Francis of Simply Ojai and your supporters, Betsy. I saw Tom Francis here in the lobby with Mr. Matt Summers negotiating the boundaries on the map for should the, the Ojai Valley Inn be in or outside of this. Tom Francis was here. He was discussing it. And Leslie Hess was here saying, we need to do this because we're concerned about people who come from Los Angeles and want to park in our city, and they have lots of money, and they're going to take over our public streets. And they're going to take over our public parking spaces. So we need to protect the residents of Ojai. So what I'm getting at is these are, these are power plays and manipulations that are straight out of the book, the, the Rules for Radicals playbook. I grew up in the 70s, right? I was a hippie. I wanted to go live on, in, in Haydas Berry in San Francisco. And I was a radical, and I understand Rules for Radicals. I see what's going on here. You vilify, you distort, you make the people who are the outsiders the bad guy, and you protect the insiders, we, the people of Ojai, so we can save the soul of Ojai. That narrative is a false narrative. It's not based on fact, Betsy. It's not. It's not based on fact. So this whole threat is a fake lawsuit. So why are we cowering to this attempt? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Renee. Any comments online, Weston?
Yes, Mayor, Perkins. And item 1J, we have Jerry Schwenke. Jerry Schwenke, you have the floor.
Gotcha. Ah, hi, I'm Jerry Schwenke again, and I still live in Ojai. And you know, this is a lot of misdirection. We're talking about valet parking as if valets are somehow people who stalk about in the dark, you know, shuttling cars around, doing something, something dirty. And the issue has never been about valets. The issue is about commercial encroachment in residential areas. And it's about commercializing all of the parking downtown and sending a signal to the residents of Ojai, we don't want your business here. Go to Walmart, go to Target, you know, you don't rate, you know, you, your money doesn't spend well here in Ojai. Go somewhere else. And, you know, none of the people who have come in here and spoken about supporting valet parking are going to wake up some morning with a commercial parking lot next to their house. There are people who live in mixed-use areas, you know, around downtown Ojai, for whom that's a very real possibility if we allow valet, if, if we do not pass this ordinance. You know, I fortunately am not in an area where that's liable to happen to me. But, you know, it'll happen somewhat if this doesn't pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. That's it?
No more raised hands, Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to discussion. Mayor pro tem?
So I want to call your attention to attachment A, page 1. And I want to assure the public that we simplified the findings, we removed the part about comparing it to the chain store ordinance. I don't want to repeat, we already debated that point.
Microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. I, we simplified the findings. We removed findings that we felt were not, could not be proven, such as that valet parking increases the number of trips. That argument, we felt, was balanced out by people circling the block. So we made a very, a very simple statement, and I'm, I'm comfortable now with the findings as, as stated. There's no comparison to the chain store ordinance. We explained why, you know, I, I explained, and, and the council, I think, did agree to take that out. So I want to, I, I actually, I, I, I can absolutely see the arguments made by the speaker. I, I tend to agree with the speakers, but I think it's better to get rid of the lawsuit and to regulate the best as we can. We have, we no longer have a ban on the outskirts, you know, in part to accommodate the Ojai Valley Inn. It's a much more reasonable, the, I feel like the ordinance is moving in the right direction where it's reasonable. I, I have a couple of concerns still that I would like counsel, hopefully briefly, to discuss. And it was called to my attention by Jamie Fleming of the, the chamber. He wanted to know why, why the, the number six. And I think there was some thought, maybe six means that a business wouldn't use valet parking except every other month. Is that, there was some logic to the number six. And I started to think, at first, it seemed reasonable to me, and then I had another week or two to think about it. First of all, Rachel clarified something I misunderstood. An, a business can still have eve, as many events as the planning commission will give permits for? They just can't use valet parking more than six times a year? Is that correct?
Yes. So generally, events don't, events at a business don't necessarily need a permit, period. It depends whether the events go outside the allowance of the business's existing authorization. Common example of that is some, a business that's inside that wants to do something in its parking lot outside the building. That requires a permit from the city, typically a TUP, sometimes a CUP, depending on the, on the facts. So that would be something that would require a permit, but there's no numeric limit on the number of those events in that category. The, the only limitation here is on using valet parking.
Okay.
So this is nothing about events generally and just about valet parking.
Okay. And my understanding is if, if a business comes before the council and, and has, and it has, it becomes, we can't predict the future, and if it is determined to be problematic, that the council can revisit that point?
Yeah, the council can amend the ordinance at will with the appropriate process.
Okay. And I'm also thinking that some, you know, some locations have less impact on neighbors and, I mean, I, I think I'm comfortable with how that's written. I, I did, I did Google the future of valet parking. And in the future, this whole ordinance will probably be mute, because people are, are going to have cars with sensors that park themselves. So, you know, we're, we're going, you know, to be honest, I'm going through this because I think the city has already faced with too many lawsuits. And I think that, you know, we, Rachel and I were on, you know, were on the, met with the, with Tom Francis and Leslie Hess and, and the, and the former city manager. And they have agreed that if we abide by these reasonable concessions or whatever, that the lawsuit, all of that legal stuff will go away, correct?
Yeah, the plaintiffs have confirmed if the council adopts the ordinance, they'll dismiss the suit.
And I, you know, I, I understand that it looks, you know, the, the point made about blackmail and all of that. So I, you know, I've come to a, a choice in this. The other thing that I think we should look at right now is the point where mobility-challenged people, and I forget where that is, that the city, where is that again?
So that was the separate direction provided at the prior meeting.
Oh, it's not in?
Independent of the ordinance, it was direction to staff to prepare a feasibility and needs assessment for public and private parking management strategies for mobility-challenged persons.
But it seemed to put the burden on the city to provide it, or only the city had the right?
No, it, it was direction from the council
Uh huh.
to the staff to prepare an assessment of strategies and options for handling mobility, for providing parking for mobility-challenged persons. It wasn't a statement that only the city can do that. That's not at all the case. It was direction to staff to prepare an assessment to come back to the council.
There is a statement, though.
It's on the bottom of page three that reflects what the council directed. And the council can always modify that direction.
Is it on the bottom of 1-3?
Yes, 1-3.
Okay.
The staff report at the bottom there. That reflects what the council directed last Tuesday. And be, obviously, staff hasn't completed that work yet, so.
A little bit?
Council can change that direction if council so desires.
I just want to make sure that any business, that, that, when you investigate this, any business can provide valet parking for mobility-challenged people, not just a city, any business.
Provided that they comply with the, with this, with the locational requirements of the ordinance, yes.
I guess we'll figure that out.
Can I, can I offer, can I offer?
Councilmember Lang?
Yeah. So my intention with directing staff in this way was, we heard from so many people saying, this could be a concern. If we, if we amend, if we adopt this ordinance, what about the instances where people would want? And so I know that ADA regulations make basically businesses provide for, for, excuse me, I'm talking. That, there are ADA requirements for, for, for businesses. But my thought was, let's find out, do we, is there a need? And if so, then I, as a council member who cares about the city, want to find a way to provide for the mobility-challenged visitors and residents of our community. So is there a need, number one? Number two, what options are there? In addition, if, perhaps there are options, if it comes back, that we could have a city-run lot for mobility challenge, or we could have shuttles or something. So my thought was, let's address that, that concern that was really voiced. And so that was my thought in, in adding this.
Okay.
And if I could just add briefly, if staff understands the direction to be, as we go through that assessment and we return to the council with some options if the need is confirmed to exist, then the council could adjust the ordinances needed to accommodate whatever program is developed. So this ordinance won't straitjacket that future program. The council, with the appropriate process, can adjust the ordinance in the future as needed to, to allow for a mobility-challenged person's mobility solution.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, is there a motion to approve J?
I, I have some discussion points. At the risk of repeating myself, I want to say that this process was absolutely undemocratic, that there were no businesses that were brought into the conversation, there were no citizens that were brought into the conversation, there were no best practices about how you handle cars coming in to the, to the process. This was just a de facto. Leslie Hess and Tom Francis and Simply Ojai decided that they did not want valet parking. And to the people who say that Mayor Sticks is not associated with them, I will say that this language was used both by Mayor Sticks and in the actual initiative referendum, which was Save the Soul of Ojai.
I'm going to ask you, Councilmember Rule, to focus on
I am.
policy, but just one second, and not, not question people's motivation, but just stick to facts.
My fact is, is that this was an undemocratic process that didn't include anyone in the city but you and a couple of people from Simply Ojai and the city attorney representing us. And that when you make decisions like this, banning stuff, it requires more than five people deciding that this is where, what it's going to be and where the boundaries are going to be. I actually had a conversation with a very good, you know, someone from outside of here who suggested a different model that I thought was really, really smart. But guess what? That never, that never percolated up. Nobody was ever asked. Nobody said, where have you been where they do, you know, innovative things with parking? No, that, that never happened. So for me, once again, it's about process. And when you make ordinances, you follow a democratic process. You look to your constituents, you ask for best practices. You don't have two people file a lawsuit, sit down with one city attorney. It is not a process that I support, and as I said it last time. But what I'm finding here over and over and over again is that the democratic process is being subverted and/or shortcut. And I am not comfortable with it. And for that reason, I am going to abstain or vote no on this ordinance. I don't think it necessarily is going to hurt anything, but I have learned of, of much better ways to solve this problem. Only guess what? We didn't ask the community. We didn't ask anybody who's ever had any experience with it. So, and it has to be said, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It has to be said. And so I'm going to leave it at that.
Any other comments from, uh, Councilmember Lang?
I just wanted to remind you, because I really hear you, and I just wanted to remind you that we did have several public comment sessions talking about this. We received countless emails. We involved, we had a whole parking committee to discuss this. And so I, I, I just wanted to remind you that the democratic process was used. The newspaper published an advertisement announcing that this was going to be on the agenda. We had members, business owners, Jamie Fleming, met with us individually. And so I, I do believe that the democratic process was used.
And I appreciate, I appreciate that. Once again, it was post, it was post-fact, but I appreciate you're, you're pointing that out. I truly do. Mayor pro tem?
So this is strictly about valet parking. And I do not really believe in studying parking in isolation like this, but this is what we have. We're doing the best we can so that we can move on to other important subjects. But this is, the, this should have been part of a larger parking study, and it will become at some point part of a larger parking study.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve from Mayor pro tem in a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. And this is to approve the ordinance and item
J.
1J.
Yep.
All right. Councilmember Whitman?
Yes?
Councilmember Rule?
No.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor pro tem Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Weston. And we will move on to item number three. Just a reminder to the public that item two was pulled. So discussion item number three. As requested by the developers, applicant rescind approvals of development agreement for Ojai Bungalows, cottages Among the Flowers, World University, and 304 South Montgomery. Consider whether to rescind the approval of a general plan, plan land use designation for World University and the removal of a referendum measure. Is there a staff report?
Briefly, yes. And then, of course, we're available for questions. And I believe Mr. Seabert may still be with us for additional questions on the planning side. As noted earlier, this item, after some debate, was maintained on the agenda, but as staff understands it, we are hearing the matter, taking public comment, asking and posing questions, and then returning for a future meeting. I, we understand that it would not be voted tonight, but that will be, of course, that's what we understood the council did earlier. Briefly, the genesis of this item is, as all will recall, in October of 2022, the then council approved a development agreement with Ojai Bungalows and Green Hawk LLC that allows for development of a housing project at 404 for development of a housing project at four sites in the city, Cottage Among the Flowers, 312 West Aliso, Mallory Way Bungalows, 412 Mallory Way, World University, 107 North Ventura, and what's known as the Montgomery Affordable Housing at 304 South Montgomery. The, the council's approval was then subjected to a referendum that has paused the council's action to approve the ordinance. The referendum was set by subsequent action by the council for the March 2024 ballot, and the lawsuit was also filed to challenge the council's approval of that. The lawsuit has been stayed pending the outcome of the referendum. Uh, as noted, the referendum is set for March of '24. Subsequent to all of that, the developer, through council, on August 11th filed a letter that's in the packet asking that the develop, that the development agreement application be withdrawn and that instead the city provide decisions on their otherwise pending applications. The staff has prepared the attached resolution in the ordinance, in the resolution in the packet that would take three actions. One is rescind the approval of the ordinance, rescinding the approval of the development agreement as requested by the developer. Two, rescind the separate approval of the resolution that approved the general plan land use designation amendment for 107 North Ventura. And three, ordering the removal of the referendum from the ballot as moot, given the developer's request to withdraw the development agreement from consideration. The developer's letter is not self-executing. The council put the measure on the ballot, only the council can take it off the ballot if the council so chose. Same thing for the approvals. The approvals were suspended via the referendum process, and only the voters can, can approve it. Uh, in this case, with the developer having requested it be pulled from the ballot and repudiating the deal, requesting that it be withdrawn, the council could, must, if the council concurs, act to pull it from the ballot and thus rescind the prior approvals. Uh, if the council chooses to do so, whether tonight or another night, as noted, another night, the net effect would be, the development agreement's approval would be erased and the referendum will be pulled from the ballot. The city would then seek to moot the lawsuit because the lawsuit would then challenge, would be challenging an approval that doesn't exist. The other next step would be the city would have to give a hearing to the developer on the pending entitlement extension applications for cottages and, among the flowers and Mallory Way Bungalows. As you'll recall, the genesis of the development agreement itself was a twenty, series of 2019 decisions in April and May that paused the council's consideration of appeals of the extension requests extending the entitlements for cottages and extending the entitlements for Mallory were paused to allow the council at the time to consider a development agreement. The net outcome was, as noted, if the development agreement's approval is rescinded as requested by the developer, then the council must give a decision on those two entitlement extension requests. That would be at a subsequent meeting as a second step, uh, to be scheduled as a public hearing with appropriate notice. The council will also, at some point in the future, uh, once the applications are complete, they are not yet complete, provide a decision to the developer who has separately applied for approval of the same project for World University at 107 North Ventura and also separately applied for approval of the 304 South Montgomery project. So the four pieces of the development agreement will all have to be decided separately in the future. Two of them, the applications are complete and were paused in '19. Council will have to give a decision at some point at a notice public hearing, not tonight, on those two applications. And then the other two, the applications aren't yet complete, but once the applications are complete and it works through the process, then that will eventually come to the planning commission and the council, uh, for approval at some point in the future. So that's a, a brief overview of the request. Um, I'll note, is in, is the, the other option, of course, is that the council declines to pull it from the ballot, as is also the council's option, then the voters will have to vote in March of 2024 whether or not to approve the development agreement and the ordinance. If the voters voted to approve it, the city would then present it to the developer as approved, and the developer would have the choice to accept that approval and build the project as proposed and as approved by the voters, or to decline and then not build it, at which point developer could choose their other choices. Uh, or the voters may disapprove the project, at which point the same approval as, the same next steps as if the council pulled it from the ballot have to happen. We would have to give a decision on the underlying entitlements for the four sites. Thank you. We're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions from council? Uh, Councilmember Rule?
So what I heard was, no matter what we do, we're going to get to the same point. I mean, if the, if it goes to ballot, if we, if we refuse to rescind-
Yeah.
Okay, and it goes to ballot and it is approved, um, then the developers can, can disavow it. They can say, no, we don't want it.
Correct.
At which case they will go ahead and do what they do, correct? And if we don't, um, put it to ballot, they're going to go ahead and pretty much do the exact same thing.
Correct. The outcome of rescinding it from the ballot or voter disapproval or voter approval are all likely to end up at the same place. I say likely, not certain, because if the voters approved the development agreement, the developer might then choose to build the project.
Okay, so, okay. So if it, there is that possibility, even though right now they are requesting-
Right, they said now-
-not to move forward. They've said, we're, we're not interested in doing that, but they could change their mind.
Absolutely. And nothing would stop them.
Right.
The lawyer's letter doesn't foreclose the opportunity.
Okay.
If the voters approve it, they could absolutely accept that approval.
Okay, so we are, basically, we've flipped positions here, right? I mean, we're up discussing whether or not we want to, um, allow a recension of the vote. I mean, right? I mean, that's what we're doing here. That's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, it's, it's whether to accept the developer's request to pull it off the ballot or not.
Right, and we fought long and hard, this whole 10 months, we've been fighting the same battle. Can we rescind the development agreement? And now they've said, we want to rescind, and now we're saying, well-
Councilmember Rule, we are, is this a question?
But it's complicated. Yes, the question is, we all, we end up at the same place, no matter what we do, except for the fact that we will have to pay for the spec, for the to-go on the ballot, which is, I understand, it was about $18,000, although I can't-
Something like that.
Something like that.
Perhaps higher.
Right.
The county always increases the cost.
Right, okay, so, um, that was what I wanted to know. Do we all end, do we end up, you know, we all end up at the same decision point, only it's going to cost us $18,000? Or they could decide that actually, um, they might want to go ahead with it if they were to win? Okay.
Right, that-
Right. I, I just wanted to be really clear, because to me, it was a little bit confusing as to, you know, what all of this, where we were going to end up, given any one of these decision tree paths that we took. But now I do understand, so, um, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, the key component is, we don't, we control some, but not all of the decisions in the tree. That's the, the, the key component.
Just a point of-
Just a reminder to go through the chair.
Sorry about that.
Okay, um, Councilmember Whitman?
But my understanding is that on January 24th, we voted 5-0 not to rescind and to send it to the voters. Is that an accurate statement?
That's my recollection, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not sure what we've been fighting since that point in time.
I don't know.
Okay, let's, let's focus on questions.
Irrelevant, thank you.
Excuse me, are you finished, Councilmember Whitman?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Mayor Protem, you have a question?
Yes. At that point, we didn't have the, an option to rescind, only the developer can re, wait, wait.
That's also not quite correct. In 2020, in January 24, January 24th, '23, the council had two choices with the referendum in hand. Rescind the development agreement and the approvals, or submit it to the voters. And the council chose to submit it to the voters. Now, the council has the same basic two choices, but the developer has requested to rescind it.
So tonight, we can either accept what the developer wants, and what he wants is, my understanding, is legal and, in my opinion, understandable due to the passage of time, or we can, uh, decide that we want further analysis. Those are basically the two choices. And so one question I have is, what is the time sensitivity to this item? I know it's already waited 20 years, but, but, um-
The deadline to pull something from the ballot is 88 days before the election, which is December 4th or 5th, I forget the exact date of-
It's the 9th.
Is it the 9th? Thank you. It's the 8th or 9th. Eighty-eight days before the election, so it's early December of '23. So we have some time, but not infinite time, for the council to decide whether or not to pull it from the ballot.
Thank you, Matt. Questions? Uh, Councilmember Rule?
Um, just for clarification, um, when I made my motion, I was not making a motion that we would not decide tonight. I was making a motion that we, I mean, the motion was basically keep it open. I, and I'm fine to go either way, but that was not the intent of what my motion was.
Just a reminder that we're on questions still. Do you have a question?
What is your recollection? I mean, I don't know when I would ask that question otherwise. Um, I, the way it's being represented back to me is not how I meant it to be, so I want that clarified, and I think this is an appropriate time to ask that.
Certainly, it's a valid question. I would suggest, what did the three who voted for the motion understand, or ask the court to read back, the motion is approved?
I'm unclear on the motion.
Okay, then.
How was the original, the motion to approve the agenda with item three kept on? Is that unclear?
No, that one is not unclear.
Can you, do you want to read back, Mr. Montgomery? The motion-
Really, a new motion?
Okay, uh, Weston, will you read the motion back? Please?
The motion that approved the agenda.
Well, I think, um, just for clarification, I think that Councilmember Lang was the deciding vote, and what I heard her say was that, I'd like to, I'll go ahead and allow discussion, but we won't make a decision tonight.
That, oh, that we would, that we would keep the discussion open. I didn't specify one way or another that we would, whether or not we would make a decision, just let's, let's hear it, let's get some more information.
Then with that, I'll retract my comments.
But we have the option of not, we have the option of getting more, yeah, so it's keeping the options open.
Right, thank you.
So then with that, the council has full, full options, and your basic choices are approve the resolution pulling it from the ballot, decline to approve, not approve the resolution pulling it from the ballot and leave it on the ballot, or continue for more discussion and analysis, et cetera.
Okay, all right, well-
I have one more question. So, um, Councilmember Whitman has said that there is a need for further analysis, or he would like to see further analysis. Do you have an understanding of what further analysis would be, what further analysis you would do, what further analysis might need to be done? Or is this as complete an understanding as we need to have in order to make a decision? So that's my question. If we need further analysis, I would like to know what that further analysis is from your point of view, and if we don't, I would like to know that as well. Is there further analysis here?
I would posit that the council members should each ask questions they have. I couldn't presume to know whether or not the council's ready to make a decision.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, so, um, when it comes time to make a motion, we can't combine, I already have one, uh, thought of how to combine all three, but you want it separate.
It's one resolution that does all three together. So it's, it's all three together, because it's one resolution that does all three.
You can make one motion and put all three together.
Yes, because it's a single resolution that does all three steps.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, let's, uh, move on to public comment. First, we have William Wirick, then Ginger Anderson, and then Elle Caldwell. Uh, well, we'll have Zoom after the live comments. So first, we have Ginger Anderson, and then Elle Caldwell, and then Jeffrey Starkweather.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Sticks and council. My name is Ginger Anderson. I'm a colleague of Beth Collins at Brownstein, representing the applicant for the development agreement. The letter we sent to the city via Matthew Summers on August 11th lays out in great detail the reasons why we're rescinding the, the DA. At this time, my clients are moving forward with their development, uh, on their properties on an individual basis rather than the development agreement. We expect the time extensions for cottages in Mallory's will be before you in the coming weeks. World and Montgomery have separate applications currently in process. Our clients are also pursuing redevelopment of their property at 510 East Ojai. All of these projects are still proposing affordable units, and we are working with staff to move these applications forward. None of these projects individually, however, are on your agenda tonight, so we'll conclude with that and say the, um, DA withdrawal letter, um, says what we need it to say, and I'll reserve my remaining two minutes if you have, uh, questions or if we, uh, need to rebut.
Thank you, Ginger. Any questions?
Nope.
Uh, okay, uh, next, we have Elle Caldwell, then Jeffrey Starkweather, and then Teal Rowe.
Hi again. I have lived in the Mallory cottages for 15 years. I've lived in three different units. In each of the times that I've moved, I've signed another rental agreement, and all except the last one have said, we are going to develop this property, we will give you ample notice. And in the first, uh, one, they said there would be supplement, there would be a stipend for helping with moving. Um, I know it's a very contentious issue, um, and I know that the people who live there, including me, are very worried about losing that housing, because at the moment, in Ojai, there is no housing available for us. The only chance for someone like me is to, now in the lottery for Whispering Oaks, to have a chance of getting in there. That's usually a three to five-year wait, if your number is in the lottery in a position that will let you get there. There is no secure housing for low and very low how, uh, people, retirees. Many people like myself have done worlds of service in our life for Ojai and other places that we've lived, who have not chosen jobs that will give us a ton of money to buy homes, to have property and so forth. But now we are in this situation. It's not this developer's fault that there is no housing for us, and it's an interesting thing to think that you hold him responsible or them responsible for that. The responsibility is on the city to provide the housing we need. Let's let the Cabrillo project go forward. Let's stipulate that Ojai citizens have first chance at those, that housing. Uh, the late, we have just had our rent raised. That has not happened every year, as it could. Um, this, the, any landlord would have the option of raising the rent every year, passing on costs of maintaining property to the tenants. This landlord does not do that. And we have been given notice that probably this project will begin in four to eight years. So you've got time to forward housing for the people who live there. The question is, will you do it? Thank you.
Thank you, Elle. Uh, next, we have Jeffrey Starkweather, then Teal Rowe, then Renee Roth.
Um, as you know, I supported this project back when it first came before the board and, uh, was voted in. And I would remind you that the issue back when we were discussing the, um, holding the referendum was when we hold a referendum. Uh, because eventually, two of the commissioners that wanted to rescind it changed their minds because of the legal situation. I predicted the time, if we don't go with an election ASAP, that we'd end up here. And we are. You can't expect a developer, time is money. And when they're having to spend time and money, that's making less money available for affordable housing. So asking them to wait a year and two months before we even have a vote, then two of the council members, mayor and women, wanted to wait till, like, almost two years or a year and a half to the general election. Um, I love elections. I love elections. I wish we were having an election on valet parking. I wish we'd have an election on this. I would love to get out there and campaign on it. Uh, you know, there's other elections I'll be involved with, but, uh, but I support their request. I think it's time we stop delaying and blocking affordable housing in this city, 30 years with no deed restricted units. Let's get started. Give them an opportunity to move forward. If you look at the, the numbers on page, uh, 19 of their, of Beth Collins' letter, they're talking now about having 78 units, 30 affordable, 21 moderate, seven low, and two very low. Now, the comment was always made, oh, I love the very low and extremely low and the low, why aren't we doing that? You cannot expect a private developer generally to provide anything but moderate. It's just not economically possible, what it costs to build. We are lucky that we have a developer who's willing to work with us and expand their development so they can provide some- so they can provide some low and very low. And yes, we need to get on with the Cabrillo project so we actually can provide 50 units of the extremely low and the very low. And so I would strongly support going along with this, even though I would love to have an election, because we need to move forward in getting affordable housing in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Next, we have Teal Rowe, and then Renee Roth.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. And I just want you all to know, I really appreciate your service. I'm just really grateful for you to be sitting up there and just taking it for the team. So my head is completely spinning around this issue. And I ask that you don't, whatever it is, to not make the decision tonight. I am a county resident, and I believe I'm speaking for the people of Ojai that signed the referendum, the voters. And I want to add one more thing that I just, I've got my old notebook, and I've got all these notes from way back. And this is a quote from Beth Collins. It says, developers constrained only if it hurts others. And I have some state laws here. I don't even know if they're right, but I'm going to say it anyway, if it's 91444 or 97423. I believe that project hurts the people of Ojai. I ask that tonight, I know that doesn't have anything to do with tonight's decision, but I do ask that you please do the analysis, do it, take time. Because my head's spinning, and I'm sure everybody that signed the referendums' head is spinning as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Teal. Next, we have Renee Roth.
Good evening again. I'm hoping I don't have to come up here and talk anymore about this ever again. Oh, boy. So I'm going to talk, I'm going to put this in the perspective, again, about the rules for radicals playbook. And how rules for radicals might attempt to squash a housing project, such as one proposed by the Beckers. So one characteristic of this approach, when looking to disrupt a housing project, is to strategically vilify developers. You vilify the developers. And I heard that in past city council meetings. Mr. Scott, you missed all that, but we had a charade and a show that was orchestrated with Mr. Tom Francis bringing in lots of people here, those money-grubbing rich people. Those people who are here, why can't you just give us some affordable housing in our community? I heard this, literally, I heard this. The vilification of those rich people and those developers. It happened. While also portraying the displaced residents as victims, victims of corporate greed and government indifference. So this, this strategy has actually worked so far in Ojai, to create a moral divide, casting villains, and the developers are the villains and the displaced residents as sympathetic underdogs. By framing the issue this way, simply can seek to garner public support and signatures on new petitions with names and phone numbers. And those names and phone numbers are then used to continue to generate more outrage, which they have been channeled into protests at city council meetings. This has actually happened here. So another characteristic is to make legal threats as a means of stalling or stopping the housing project. We have that going on right now. This was the purpose of the Minner memo, which Betsy Styx requested, and we now know was looking to condemn the property or seek violations, et cetera, et cetera. We now know that those, that Minner memo is something that was used to try to thwart the development agreement. So let's move forward, and let's stop the vilification and get this project going. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. And just a reminder that it was a council majority vote to do that. Larry Steingold?
Yes, one more in the house.
I have to point out, it was a council vote to do that without the knowledge that the attorney came from Sabrina Vinskas. So let's do full disclosure if we're going to make a statement. It's important that people know that. I would never have voted for it had I known that the recommendation came from Sabrina Vinskas, which you did not disclose.
Just a reminder, I got three recommendations. I researched them all. The one that was the most highly lauded by US World and, US News and World Report was the one that is a great firm, so that's what happened.
And Sabrina Vinskas called them and vetted them for us.
Larry?
SB, excuse me, SB 649, which was mentioned by our city manager at your priority conference saying, hey, this is a layup. This is something that's provided us by the governor. You get to pick local preference for affordable housing. My city councillor said, she's for it, she's for it, she's for it. I assume you two are. I assume everybody here is for Ojaians to be housed first, right? They're your constituents, so we should get first choice at affordable housing. So why can't you put it on the agenda? If you can put elephants on the agenda with three phone calls, why can't you put this on the agenda? Why can't you do it tonight? Okay, you sit here and say, oh, Ojai, great, Ojai community. Well, put it on the agenda, vote for it. Ojai citizen preference. Is it that difficult? Is it that hard? Maybe that the property doesn't qualify. I don't care. The point is, it's good optics. Why? Hey, you get first preference. It's not that difficult. So just do it.
Larry, can I make a comment really quickly to you? SB 649, which by the way, I read through 150 housing laws and found that one. Let's be really clear about that, you know, okay?
No, no, it's voted.
Yeah, yeah, so, so it's fine. I mean, right.
Even if it doesn't qualify.
Right, but that's not the question. The question is, is that the, these particular developers can opt in to do that, not require, they're not, they don't need to follow, you know, SB 649. They could just say, as good citizens and as people who love Ojai, we would be willing to make that one of the things that, conditional. Okay, thank you.
You guys can make it legal. It's okay to pick Ojai residents first. Now, what that preference is, how you set that up, I have no idea. Okay, maybe that devil's in the details, but at least put it on the books. At least it looks good.
Thank you, Larry. Any comments online, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. One raised hand, Jerry Schwenke. Jerry, you have the floor.
Hi, I'm still Jerry Schwenke. I still live in Ojai. And you know, I have a problem with, with language here. We keep talking about affordable housing. But what's being proposed here may be affordable statewide, you know, and maybe affordable in the county generally. But people who work in Ojai, their wages are about half of the, the mean for the county and the mean for the state. So this may be affordable housing for somebody, but it's not affordable housing for people who work in Ojai. You know, so why are we building it in Ojai if it, people who work in Ojai can't afford to live in it? You know, or why don't we call it it, what it is? Housing that's too expensive for people who work in Ojai. Housing that's too expensive and cost prohibitive for people who are retired and living on social security. You know, we're not kidding anybody. And, you know, it's also very disheartening to listen to someone stand at that podium and vilify and disparage the city council on three separate occasions this evening, and then come up and plead and cajole about the vilification of contractor developers. Mrs. Potney, Mrs. Kettle, thanks.
Thank you, Jerry. Is that it, Weston?
No more raised hands.
Okay, we will move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
I'll, I'll begin. My concern in reading through this is that I think we, as a city council, need to be in the best position to get the best deal possible for the public. And I am very interested in advice about how each one of these decisions we're being asked to make impact our ability to get the best solution for the public. I think it's worthy to take the time. I don't know for certain that it's going to require a closed session, because I don't know what I don't know right now. But if an attorney comes back and says, we need a closed session to discuss the legal impact of each one of these decisions, then that's what we should do. And that's, that's, that's my position, and I think that's what we should do, is, is seek advice about how each one of these impacts our position vis a vis what the developer wants to do.
Mayor Protem?
Well, for me, this is like a nightmare, revisiting what the previous council already did. Previous council already did what you are, what you would like to see happening now. That was already done. And there was opportunity to, to, to negotiate, you know, but we allowed, you know, we weren't happy, some of us weren't, you know, it wasn't ideal, but we didn't intervene. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the developers' rescinding of the previous approval, and to formally undo the prior approval and pull the referendum off the ballot. I would like to be done with this so that we can move forward on the Cabrillo project and the Habitat for Humanity. We should, you know, I'm sorry that this is still, that we're still having this discussion that will more than likely end up, I don't, I don't see any new information coming that we don't already know legally. That's my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it, and.
And we still need to have comments from, so you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I do. When I hear Councilman Whitman say, the best deal we can get, I hear negotiation. We're not in negotiation. They don't want to negotiate. There's no negotiation. They want to rescind. They want to, they want to walk. Are you suggesting that we go back into negotiation and get the best deal that we can?
I'm suggesting we get advice.
We got advice. We have it. It's not, we're not, we're not negotiating. There's no deal here. There's, there's a path forward. There's a decision that we make. It all ends up at the same place. The best deal, that means negotiation. I, I mean, I hate to say it. So, you know, really? I think not. You know, it all ends up at the same place. So we can spend $18,000, we can have Matt. I mean, there's nothing left to, there's nothing left to understand. There's no negotiation. There's no best deal. There's, make a decision. And so I'm not going to continually repeat myself, but, you know, we could as well, you know, ask the developers to consider SB 649. Maybe that would be the negotiation. And to Jerry Schwenke's point about how low income and moderate income and low, low income, that is a confusing concept that has to do with household income. It does not have to do with how much one person makes, and you need to really understand it in context. And it's important that you understand it in context. So I just want to make that really clear, that it's not about what one person makes, it's about what a household makes. And so if you have two teachers, each making $70,000, they qualify. Anyway, that's a discussion we need to have, but it's this misinformation all the time about that particular term, which just, you just need to look at the numbers. You just need to look at the numbers to know who would qualify for low and who wouldn't qualify for low. Your teachers will qualify, your EMTs will qualify, your health care, you know, your dental hygienist will qualify. Anyway, I'm seconding the motion. I don't think there's any, there's no gray area here, you know? If, if we don't do this, it goes to the voters. And we still end up at that same decision tree. And, you know, I think we ask our attorney, what, are we missing anything? Is there any analysis to be done?
Councilmember Lang?
I would, I would actually like to hear that, too. I mean, because there are a couple of things that I am not certain about, and that would be, you know, the, the potential of this coming back in separate, in separate properties. And so there are some things that I actually do have questions about that, that, I mean, I'm leaning toward giving the, I know these developers have been through so much. And they're, you know, they've, I'm also with Mayor Protem Francina that this, that as much as I want this to move forward, I also do feel like there are some questions that I have regarding the, the potential of, of this coming back. So I'm wondering.
Can you, can you ask?
What I understand these questions would likely be is, as noted, the next steps, if the council withdraws, adopts the res, withdrawing the approvals and pulling it from the ballot, the next steps will be hearings on the two extension applications and the two separate applications for World, University, and Montgomery Affordable Housing. Those four applications will be four separate decisions to approve or disapprove those four projects. Based on past history, we can expect that will be sued, whatever the council decides. All four options. Four projects means eight options. Approve or disapprove each of the four projects. Lawsuits are likely on all eight of those options. The council could, of course, consider the litigation risk of those options and the chances of success in those lawsuits in a future closed session. That would be the additional piece of advice that could be provided to the council. That's, of course, not in the staff report.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you. It's the potential, I would, I would like to, to, to have more information about the potential, the potential for lawsuits on those, on the, this coming back.
That can certainly be provided in a future closed session.
Okay, I'm going to comment, I would, I'm going to comment. I appreciate what my council members have said and members of the, the residents. I do agree, though, that we need to be in the best position. This is a huge decision for our community, and I appreciate what Teal said. I don't think we're ready to make a decision tonight. I think we need to take some more time, do some more research, answer those questions that you mentioned, Councilmember Lang, and see how those decisions will impact us for the, to get the best results. And I think there is a lot to understand. And I agree that these numbers are very random. We need to talk about how much per month these units cost. So we are looking at a rental rate disclosure ordinance, which I'm excited about at the next meeting. So that will, I think, help illuminate. So that's where I'm coming from. So we have a motion, and we have a second, Councilmember Lang?
If I, if I could make us, just a second, a secondary motion, I would like, I would like to give, make a motion that we continue analysis, but that we come, come back with this before the December deadline so that we would have the choice of taking this off, or that, I want, I want to give us the opportunity to make this decision before the, the deadline to, to get this off the ballot.
Is there a second for that motion?
Yes, for Councilmember Langs.
Okay, can we have the?
No, we're not ready to vote. I would like to point out that all of this is going to delay us moving forward on low-income housing. It's, there's going to be delay. There's only so much staff time. So we're, you know, we've already delayed almost a whole year, and now we're going to delay till almost December the 4th. I also want to remind. I also want to remind people, all of us, that even if housing is more expensive, at least we have housing. And those people can rent out a room and probably will rent out a room or do a home share. During the election, there was always talk about home sharing and renting out a room. I'm renting out a room. It's working out just fine. It's not ideal, but it's, I have a roof over my head because somebody built a house. If that, you know, that's, that's just a fact. So the other concern I have, it sounded like you, that when you said that if, if, if this council does accept the rescind, then the developer comes back with the four projects separated. And I'm very keen on that. I like separating all four projects. But why did you say that there would automatically be lawsuits?
I said there would likely be lawsuits. And the reason is because the developer has threatened in writing to sue the city if the city is to deny one or all of the four projects. And based on past history, if the city were to approve the, one or all of the four projects, we would likely see litigation challenging that approval because the existing approval was, was, a lawsuit was filed to challenge it.
Wait, I didn't follow, I couldn't follow that.
Let me try that again. So the developer has already threatened to sue the city if the city denies those four projects, any one of the four. So if the city denies it, the developer's already threatened to sue us for it. And they probably would pull that trigger. I don't know for certain, but I'm, I would expect they will. And then on the other side, if the city approves one or all of the four projects, the folks who sued to challenge the approval already would probably sue again because nothing will have changed.
Okay, well, let's be clear on that, okay? Because if the projects go through the planning commission and it goes through the normal, you know, standards, good standards, and then the council, and, and, you know, it gets approved, the people doing the suing is not the developer. It would be the same people who are suing now.
Exactly. It'd be the people, but either way, the city gets sued.
That's correct, but, but let's, I want the public to be, I wasn't clear on that. I want the public to be clear that we're dealing with a group of people that are likely to sue if they don't get what they want.
And that's true on all sides.
And that's true on the developer's part?
Yes, but the developer's project is going to go through the planning commission. We're already familiar with, with, we, the, we already are familiar. I think it's a good project. I mean, that's my, my feeling. I'm very familiar with the project, the pros and cons of the project. I have struggled with this for, I think, almost four years. And I am confident that the developer will do good work. This is not some, you know, this is, so, yeah.
If I could caution all members of the council, the four projects aren't yet before you. So I would refrain from saying anything about potential approval or disapproval or conditions of the four projects, because you want to preserve the ability to vote.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Lang?
I have a clarifying question, too. So if we, if we can, if we vote to continue the analysis at another time before the next election, would that, would that prevent the developer from moving forward right now with applications for those four individual, like, would, would that stall their process?
Yes and no. So the, the, the applications break in two categories. The World University and, and Montgomery Affordable Housing applications are on an independent timeline. They'll continue processing on that timeline. The other two applications to extend cottages and Mallory are, if the development agreement is approved, then the underlying entitlement and extensions are also approved. Same thing if the development agreement is disapproved. But those hearings would only be held if the development agreement were disapproved, whether by the voters or by the council. They haven't yet applied separately for builder's remedy projects, for example. They could do that, but they haven't done that. They've applied, they've demanded, rather, a hearing on the two existing applications from 2019 that were paused by the development agreement. So those two would remain paused until we had a decision on the development agreement. But Mallory, I'm sorry, World University and Montgomery would continue to process through the usual timeline.
Okay, Councilmember Rule? Yeah, so it seems to me that we are going to go back and review everything in, that we've already done. We're going to talk about the what-ifs. What if this happens, then that will happen. What we have done ad nauseam, and we're not going to, I mean, you can do an analysis, but this analysis has already been done, you know? I mean, all of this has gone into the nine years or however long, the development agreement. All of this has already been done. These analysis of being sued and what they're going to sue us for now, it's true, there are new housing laws. But even an analysis of, you know, how they can sue us is not going to change the matter of whether or not they're going to sue us. You know, and it could be a new, I'm just saying, we're prolonging this to, to, I can see to no end that we're prolonging this. Okay, if we don't, you know, possibly they will sue us. There'll be a whole bunch of new laws that they can throw into the mix. We don't need to know that. Honestly, I just have to tell you. They're going to do what they're going to do. And, and, you know, Simply Ojai and that group is going to do what they're going to do. They're going to file another CEQA claim, you know? And new laws coming out, looking around CEQA. It's like, we know what that is. That's a stall tactic. So they're going to, my point is, everybody's going to do what they're going to do. We should just move on with this. And, I mean, if, I don't see the new analysis. And if we're going to hold off until December, you know, once again, we're just failing to make a decision, failing to, to actually do our job, so. We have a motion and we have a second. Do you want to repeat the motion, Weston?
Yes, there are two motions on the floor. The substitute motion by Councilmember Lang, seconded by Councilmember Whitman, is to continue analysis of the item and to bring it back before City Council, before the December deadline of the Ventura County Elections Division, eighty-eight days before the March 5th primary election.
Thank you. Could we, the roll call, please?
I have one more point. What else are we not going to discuss when we bring this back? What else on our list of thirty-five priorities are we not going to discuss? And that we're going to, I just, before people vote, I want you to understand that, that our discussions are a zero-sum game. You know, what we do discuss means we don't discuss something else important. And we've done this for ten months now. You know, we passed a reach code that, you know, that affects three houses.
Let's stay on the agenda, please?
I'm staying on the agenda. You know, I'm staying on the agenda. I think it's a, it's a point to make before we vote. You know, what, what are you willing to, to kick down the road, voting for in order to revisit this yet again, is a question that you should ask yourself. And for me, nothing.
Roll call, please, Wes? Oh, sorry.
I'm just going to comment. We got our attorney identifying the potential for eight lawsuits. So we're not going to be doing nothing. An attorney is potentially going to be telling us how each one of these decisions impact or don't impact eight different lawsuits. And I think it's worthwhile for us to have information to know how it's going to impact it. If it doesn't have any impact, then, then it's not a problem. But we're, you know, we're, in my mind, it's what we need to do to, to have due diligence.
I, I agree with Councilmember Whitman. Yeah.
Of course you do.
Yep. Ginger?
Really sorry to interrupt. I, I know it's kind of out of order. But we've been waiting since 2019 on these time extensions. And the development agreement was a good faith effort. It's gone. We're still proposing development as similar as to what we can, based on not having a development agreement. We really don't want to wait till December. I know it seems like, oh, it's another two months. It's been four years. What is another two months? It's, it's a lot. And I respectfully let a council member rule through the mayor. I agree with what you're saying. I think you know what's going, what the options are. So I, I would just beg, I think Beth begged, in last September, a year and a month ago, begged for thirty more days. I'm begging for not thirty more days. I, I think we should do this a lot faster. I think you could get your council advice and come back before December. I, I just respectfully would, would hope we could do it quicker than that.
Thank you, Ginger.
Can I ask her a question?
Sure.
Would, would, like, two weeks, or would, would?
That would be great.
Okay. Or like, no, 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 nevermind, like, like in November at some time, or like, you could?
Well, I, I don't think we can promise to do it any faster than it's feasible to do it. But I, I don't have a problem with it being moved forward as quickly as we can.
No, I don't either.
That's what staff always understands as the directive on this one.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please, Weston?
I'll look to the city attorney. Does that change the motion as previously stated?
Yes.
Well, I understood the motion was to come back as soon as we can. December is the statutory deadline.
I, I think that we were, that they were asking for, you know, as soon as we can is pretty ambiguous. So as soon as we can, how soon?
The key, then, is the question for the council. Do you want a closed session and an open session item on the same night? Or do you want the closed session followed separately by an open session item? That's the key question for the council, not for me.
Why is there a closed session?
Because the count, the motion would entail, the motion is to have a closed session.
Why?
Because the council wants advice, your colleagues are looking for advice on the legal risks.
And, and the public can't hear that?
The council has the right to receive legal advice in closed session.
And the council can also make it an open session, can they not, if they so chose? I'm not saying that. I mean, the council does have the power to do that. A closed session is not de facto must. A closed session is a choice of the council.
It's a choice of the majority of the council, yes. I understood the motion to be, have a closed session discussion and receive that legal advice.
We never say closed session, so that was an assumption, but not a bad one.
That was actually stated by Councilmember Lang, so not an assumption. It was a statement.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Yes.
I missed that. I'm sorry. Yeah. Right, right, right. But legal advice never has to be a closed session.
Councilmember Lang, do you want to repeat that with your?
I just kill myself now.
Do we need to call the suicide hotline?
I do.
Well, let's, let's stay on topic. Councilmember Lang?
Come on, let's do it.
So I, I was just, I don't even remember saying, I don't want you to commit suicide. What, so, what, city attorney, would it be your advice that we would have a closed session meeting? I didn't explicitly say closed session, but it was the implication.
We'll take majority direction, but we would advise to receive legal advice on the, the implications, options, and risks of several losses against you to receive that advice in closed session. It's equivalent to not playing poker with your cards down.
Okay.
That's my firm advice. Obviously, it's the council's choice.
We're not playing poker. This is not cards.
Let's, let's have the roll call, please, Weston.
Can you read the motion?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Lang, seconded by Councilmember Whitman, to continue analysis of the item and receive that advice in closed session and to come back as soon as possible and before the March 5th, eighty-eight days before the March 5th election deadline of the Ventura County Elections Division.
Roll call, please.
I, I, once again, I'm, I'm going to make the point, we looked for, like, not, as, as little ambiguity as possible and as soon as, as soon as you can. You know, do you have, can you give us any sense so that our, you know, other people can know?
The short answer is it's up to the scheduling of the council.
So if we?
If the council wants to schedule a special meeting between now and the 24th, we could return with the open session item, the same item as now on the 24th.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Is it possi, wait, city, city manager? Is that, is that possible?
We, we, this is where I defer back to the council.
I haven't spoken all night, okay? I don't have a clue what kind of special legal analysis you're going to do between now and two or three weeks from now. What are you talking about doing that you couldn't have done tonight? What, what kind of legal analysis, whether we're going to get sued or not? Because they're asking us how soon we can get done. I don't know the answer to the question, because I don't know what it is we're going to do between now and then. What are you going to do to get that advice to the council over this period of time? Because unless we understand that, what are we doing? What are we doing?
What I understand that I'll be doing is write a memo that explains the options.
Of what?
Of the coming choices, meaning.
That doesn't make, that's not a sentence.
Let me finish the sentence.
Okay, I've been, I've been listening to you all night long, Matt. Don't tell me what I'm going to ask you, okay? I want to know what exactly you think we're going to do in this period of time, this short period of time, because it's a short period of time. Two weeks, there's not a chance in the world that if we don't already know these answers today, that we're going to know them in, in two weeks. I mean, that's, that's tomorrow's agenda item is due, right, for that item? So let's be, let's be clear. Are we talking about going and getting somebody to evaluate the litigation case? Whether we have, we have rescinded the ballot measure or not? Is that the thing that we're trying to evaluate? Or are we trying to evaluate the legal case as it relates to four or five projects down the road? What is it we're going to try to do in order to answer this question for the council?
My understanding is the latter. It would be assessing the?
Then it doesn't really relate to what's on the agenda tonight.
Well, it does if each of these items has a potential impact on those.
In what way?
Rescinding the resolution, rescinding the development agreement approvals and pulling it from the ballot triggers an automatic requirement to have a hearing on the four, on the two applications for cottages and Mallory. That hearing will then result in a decision to approve or disapprove those, those two applications, which the council could receive advice on who will sue us and how from that.
I agree. And I don't see any reason in the world why we have to have that discussion in closed session. And if, in fact, we think that that's a fundamental issue in terms of not rescinding, then how does that change our behavior on that question? Do we decide not to rescind because somehow we think that's not going to happen later on?
If the council chose not to rescind and the voters approved the project, then the, the having to give a hearing on the extensions wouldn't happen. In other words, there's a possible state of the world that could come from the decision to rescind or not.
That's if the applicant, if the applicant decided to go forward with it.
Correct. And if the voters approved it. Two ifs.
Yes, but if the applicant decided not to go forward, we'd be right back in the same place.
Absolutely.
So it's an extremely narrow issue that we're looking at here. We're looking at what happens under a scenario where it goes on the ballot and the applicant decides to accept the, the approval of the project. That's what we're talking about looking at.
And if the voters approve it.
That's what I said. If the voters approve it.
And the applicant accepts it.
And the applicant accepts it. That's the legal risk that we're talking about. How does that change our perspective on these, these four projects?
I also understood that the council wants advice on the losses that would follow from approval or disapproval of, of the four applications.
But that's going to happen one way or the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, and you don't know. How could you?
Let's, let's bring it through the, the chair, please. Are you finished, Mr. City Attorney? Yes? Yep.
I mean, I, so we can provide the legal advice as fast as the council wants it. As noted, much of it does already exist.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Okay, I, I asked similar questions, and I've come to the similar conclusion as our interim city manager.
I haven't reached a conclusion. I don't.
Oh, okay, well.
I just didn't understand the questions.
You know.
Frustrated with that.
My thought process, I can say, is similar. And I'm going to read, it's okay if I read how you responded to me, right? Because I thought it was very clear-cut and simple. So I asked, what was it that the council has to decide tonight? Because when I read the staff report, my interpretation was that we didn't really have a choice. And I wanted clarification. And the response I got from our city attorney is the council's action is to accept the rescinding and to formally undo the prior approval and pull the referendum off the ballot. As a practical matter, there's not much choice because the developer has rejected the development agreement, but their rejection alone cannot undo the prior approval and does not automatically result in the ballot measure being withdrawn. The council needs to formally act to rescind the approvals and pull the referendum off the ballot. And that's why that last sentence was my motion.
Okay, Councilmember Lang?
I want to clear. I want to, I'm, I'm, I thank you so much for reading that, because I'm hearing it in a different way than I'd heard it, than I'd heard it before. Because even if we do proceed with a closed session or with some other discussion, we're likely moving toward the same outcome, correct? Is that, is that, is that correct? Did I hear that correctly?
Likely, yes, with the possible caveat that the developer might, if the voters approve it, the developer might still build.
Okay, okay.
That's the only caveat.
But understanding that they want not to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, they have said they don't want to do it.
I know, so if, if the voters, yeah, I think this is all just.
Okay.
The issue is, we don't know what we don't know. So, until we hear advice as to how each one of those three decisions potentially is used for or against us in some future litigation from one of the two possible plaintiffs, depending on what the lawsuit is, we don't know.
We can't know.
Well, an attorney can give us advice.
Okay, okay, well, city manager.
Let me say one last thing, and, and it's a little bit off mark, but this weekend, totally unrelated to any of this, I send an email to the council, and I'm happy to make it a public email, it was no big deal, suggesting that we may have reached a point where it would make sense for us to retain special counsel as it relates, and this is, Matt and I both agree with this. I think I'm not putting words here out.
No, yeah, agreed, agreed.
That we bring someone in who can advise us on housing legislation and who can advise us on relationships with HCD. I think it's a good time to do that. It's messy for the city attorney to also be our litigation lawyer. And I think that this would be a good time to do that. And there's firms out there that the council considered to, to do that. I don't think it's possible on the short term to get somebody up to speed in order to do that analysis for, on this time schedule. But I would still suggest that that's something that we should do going forward. And frankly, I think that's ninety-nine percent likely to be where the analysis of litigation risk falls. I don't think it's likely to be analysis on what happens if we withdraw from the ballot. I think it's likely to be on what's going forward with all these other projects. And we need to figure out how to do this cleaner, let's face it. The, you know, this, this is, we've got to be an organization that can deal with development in a less messy way than we've been doing it. So, I, I still think that's something you want to do. I just don't think that you can really bring somebody in and get good advice on that shorter timeframe. I don't think it's going to, going to be possible.
Thank you. All right, well, yes, Councilmember Lang.
Actually, you know, in light of all this discussion, I, I mean, and what you're saying now, that we're not going to be able, that it's, that it's going to be very difficult, if not possible, to have special counsel come in to, to work through this in a closed session. I think we are dealing with a time, I, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to, to, to take my motion back. Because I, I just don't think it's feasible to be able to do the kind of analysis that we're talking about doing. I think we're going to end up at the same result.
Well, I, thank you for that, Councilmember Lang. I still think that this is a huge decision, and we need advice on these lawsuits. And it's, housing legislation is really tricky right now. So, I, I would, I still think we need to be in the best position, and we need to take a little more time and get some more advice. But anyway, you want to rescind your motion?
You did, all right.
You did, okay, and then it is?
I want to go back to my motion.
Okay.
I want to amend my motion. My original motion is to, to accept the rescind and to formally undo the prior approval and pull the referendum off the ballot and do what, and that can be a separate motion. We should definitely do, as our interim city manager recommended, is that we, can you help me with the words?
It'd be retain special counsel on housing issues to provide advice to the council in closed session regarding several pending housing projects.
Yes, yes.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
I would second that motion.
Roll call, please, Weston.
I'd like to seek city attorneys. Repeat that motion for me, please.
As I understand the motion, it would be to adopt a resolution that would rescind the approval of ordinance number 934, rescind the approval of resolution number 2258, both approving the development agreement and general plan land use designation amendment, and order the removal of the referendum measure from the ballot, and directs the hiring of special housing counsel.
Motion understood. Roll call. Mayor Sticks.
No.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Can I split my vote?
You'd have to make a motion to separate the question, and at this point, you might just vote.
Okay.
I believe the motion already has been voted.
Because I, because I do, because I do approve of retaining special counsel. But I'll vote no, since we've got three votes to retain special counsel.
Motion passes.
All right, motion passes. All right, let's take a brief break, and we will be back. Thank you.
Okay, oh, if we could come back to, uh, come back to council, please. We will begin with item number four, city manager update on city council top priority items. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, and I promise I'm not gonna do lengthy update on everything on that list. I put, I put the, I listed all of the top twelve or so priorities just in case people wanted to ask questions about them. I wouldn't have to say it's not on the agenda. But those, the items that are listed in the agenda title are the ones that the council identified as the top priorities when we did our exercise. So I just wanted to give oral updates on where we are on some of these. And I'm gonna start with, with one that, that probably would cause everybody heartburn. And that's the city manager recruitment. Because, well, let me, let me address the city manager candidates who are still watching. And, and I'm, and I will also address the ones who may watch this on replay. If they get to this point in the meeting. And they might, because it says city manager recruitment, so they might watch through the end to see this. So I want to address those people and tell them something that, and I'm, I'm saying this from the heart. As I sat here tonight and listened to you all talk about a whole bunch of things that happened before I ever got here. Meaning that I didn't really have much background on any of them, I didn't feel like I was doing you much good today. But as I sat and listened to this, and I thought about the potential this community's got. And the issues that we've got in front of us. Real, honest to goodness, solid issues of, of management and city planning. And environment, things that really matter. You know, there's, there's two ways to evaluate a spirited discussion in a community. And one of them is to be discouraged by it. And the other is to realize that we're talking about people who care about their community. And I can say to those candidates, if I were good enough to look into the camera, I could do this, but I'm not. All those years in Beverly Hills and I haven't learned how to look into the camera. That one? See, that, everybody's trying to help me. This is, this is the kind of community we've got. People are trying to help me. But, so all of you candidates who are watching, for all of the discussion we've had tonight, it's only nine thirty. And, and all of you candidates know, the meetings that you're going to in your own cities right now are probably longer than that. So it, it's not that we have meetings that go forever and ever and ever, sometimes we do, but mostly not. But the most important thing is that it's a community that cares about their town. I wish I were fifteen years younger. And I could make this a city that I wanted to spend, you know, another twelve years in. I wish that I could commit myself in this town to really being able to make that difference that a good manager like our last one did. Like James Vega. And all of you candidates should call James Vega at the Port of Wainimi. And ask him if he loved working in Ojai, because he will tell you that he did. So I'm, I'm truly shamelessly pitching to these candidates tonight when I'm talking to you. I like very much working with every one of these council members. And with my colleague, city attorney here, and my other colleagues sitting at the table. This is a good group of people to work with, and a, and a worthy group of people to work with. This is a job worth taking a look at. And if, and watching the meetings might give people a false impression. This is a great community, and so I wanted to take this time. The city manager recruitment update is that the job is posted, this is the update for the public. The job is posted, we've hired Ralph Anderson and Associates to do the recruitment. We've got a top quality recruiter. All of the council members now have had individual discussions with the recruiter, I believe that's true. And, and have let the recruiter know what we need, and let the recruiter know what our challenges are. And our challenges, among other things, we've got some governance challenges, and we all accept that, we all admit that. We all know that we need to do better in some of those ways. So it's a good place for a manager who wants to be part of something that's on a way up. And, and I'm still hopeful that we're gonna find those candidates out there. And I encourage people to call me if they, if they wanna talk. So that's the city manager recruitment, we're working on it. And hopefully, in a couple of months, it'll be closed, and we'll have finalists, and the recruiter will do an evaluation. We'll come back, ask the city council to choose finalists from among the group. And we will then have an opportunity to get to know somebody and hopefully make a good decision. So that's, that's the city manager recruitment. That'll be my second longest update. The second one is just the overall discussion of the city hall campus issues that we raised at the, the workshop. And those included the fact that this is city-owned property, it's a great piece of property. It is property that needs to be managed right, in a sustainable manner, a respectful manner, respecting the land and, and the habitat. We have public activities occurring on this site, potential for public education on the site. We've got a community garden that is not getting the respect that it deserves. We had a, we received recently a report from the Green Coalition, have I said that right? That is a very impressive report, I hope the council is okay if we schedule that for presentation to the council coming up. And the public can, can receive that. All of that relates to the, to the land and the property. The big issue that we're all very, very aware of is the encampment that has occurred here. Where people are camping on, on the grounds, and, and the numbers of campers has gotten bigger. The tents have gotten bigger. And the council gave me authority to move forward with a budget of two hundred thousand dollars to seek a couple of things. One was to seek some, some way to supervise the site. To work with the people who are camping there, to come up with some reasonable rules and, and guidelines by which camping could continue there in the short term. And I say the short term, not in weeks, but it's probably a, a few years probably before we don't have people on this site, I would guess. But to put it, to keep it in, in an orderly way with a capacity, because we can't just put everybody in there. That's gonna create some issues, so it's gonna take a skilled person who can come in there and work with this population and try to accomplish those goals. And, and to treat them respectfully, we put, we have put new porta-potties, I don't like that word, but we put new, new equipment. Temporary rest rooms, I like that much better. And we, we put nicer ones out there, and we're gonna try to upgrade some other ways that we address the living conditions out there. And I think it's possible that I may have found someone who will take this task on. I'm not gonna name names, but I'm quite optimistic that there's someone with some experience in doing this who's gonna be capable to take that on and work within the budget that we've talked about. And probably will need a couple of assistants to help with that, because no one's gonna be able to do this twenty-four seven. So I think we've made some progress in a fairly short period of time. The other part of this equation is this three incredible, and I'm sure there's more than three volunteers working on this, but the three super volunteers that, that we, that I've been getting to work with. Ruth Miller, George Gaines, Betsy Van Light, have been working nonstop on this. And trying to get, trying to help with how we could put together a grant application to get some funding through the state. That would allow us to put together some kind of a inner interim. I've been told not to use the term transitional in terms of this grant application, but rather interim housing. That would then allow people to eventually move to permanent housing. There are some challenges with that. There's challenges with the grant itself. Now, some other cities in Ventura County have succeeded to get these grants. We think, we, we wanna think we have a chance to get there. The grant itself, if we could get it, would pay for the development of the facilities, we would hope. And two years' worth of operations of the facility. These, this trio of, of volunteers has, has arranged for meetings, some of which I've been able to participate with, with people who would operate the, the facility, if we're able to get it. Who would, we've worked with the help of Ojai that already serves some of the, some clients there, and we continue to be involved. We've talked to other groups that operate other kinds of services, food and medical. And we're, we're really zeroing in on what I think is a pretty impressive application. Two challenges with the application, and I'm not asking for answers, I'm just telling you where we are. It, the NOFA, the Notice of Funding Available hasn't come out yet, so we've probably got about two months, once that comes out. But we need to have a site. And it's gonna be tricky to get a site that quickly that, that we can use. But we, we are very interested in identifying the site where these small houses will go. We've been working with Dignity Moves in terms of a possible developer of the site, and we're very impressed with what they've done. And the other problem is that the application, they look for where these people can move after their interim housing period. In other words, where are we going to have housing available that people can move into in terms of permanent housing at the end of an interim housing period? That's a harder, harder challenge, and some of the other cities have been, it's been easier for them to identify. One angle, and I hope my trio doesn't get mad at me for spilling the beans on all of these things. But one angle in all of this is that we actually could apply for permanent housing, not for interim housing. We could still do it with the small, small houses. But that's, that's another angle on how to do this. Another angle would be if we could find enough land that we could do both. And if we could do both, that would be win-win-win. So we, you know, I'm married to a woman who always says, dream, dream your dream. And so I think we gotta dream our dream first and go for what we can get, and if we have to step back, we'll look at stepping back. But all that's going on, and all that's gone on since August thirtieth, when we had that discussion with the city council. So there are things that are certainly moving on these topics. The other thing, two, two or three other things I'll mention briefly. The ATP project, you know where we are in that, we had that discussion just very recently. We did have a team meeting, team, a project meeting today that included Caltrans and, and Alta Planning, who's doing the engineering designs for the ATP project. It included people doing the right-of-way acquisition, and it included the, the gentleman from, Peter, from the Transportation Commission, who was here the night of our meeting. And, and we laid out to them what the council said that night. And we said, the council is, is leaning favorably toward pursuing Phase One with a couple of understandings. One is that all of the money that is budgeted for Phase One and Phase Two can be used in Phase One so that we're not out of pocket on that project. At least not for that amount of money, and hopefully it wouldn't be more than that. And that seems to be something that people are comfortable with. The other caveat was that we wanna be able to take the time on Phase Two to really evaluate the scope of that project, especially as it relates to the bike path element of it. And that, the answer to that is pretty much what we were told that night, although I don't know that I caught it as, as readily. That the California Transportation Commission is the final authority on that, it's not Caltrans as much as CTC. And they said, CTC has been very rigid on scope change. And then they said, but there is a process. So we will have the opportunity to pursue the process, to talk about that. And I think, I think there is some understanding that there are places along Ojai where it's very, very scary to think about bicycles. I mean, it's hard to drive down Ojai in that section with the retail. Somebody opening a car door could, could hit a bicyclist, or vice versa. And somebody in a car could hit the bicyclist. And we're not talking about a project that's making that wider. So it's, it, there may be some arguments for looking at the other path and, and doing those kinds of enhancements. But that's, that's yet to come, we've got time to work on that. So by and large, I felt pretty good about the project team and their reaction to what we said. Pickleball. Pickleball, the good news is I talked to Supervisor Laverre. Very supportive of what we're trying to do. Soul Park, he's very supportive of what had been negotiated already on that. And lots of time had gone into that. I asked him how, how rigid the county was on the fifty-eight thousand dollars gate fee to cover that. And he said, well, it was, it was really the city that, that didn't wanna have a gate fee. That, that the fifty-eight thousand dollars was the cost it would take to eliminate the gate fee. And that, right now, if you're, if you buy a, an annual, of course, the rate could change, but right now, I believe it's thirty dollars for a year, I think it's thirty. If Luis was here, he'd know. And I believe if you're a senior, it's only twenty. So I'm not sure, that's something we can talk about, whether or not the gate fee is, is that big an impediment that we wanna pay fifty-eight thousand dollars a year to get rid of it. But maybe we do, maybe you do. But that's, that was one of the two issues people brought up. And the other one was, if we're gonna put an investment in a facility, in a pickleball facility, do we really wanna have an agreement that we canceled on twelve months' notice? And he said, well, we hadn't really assumed that you were putting that kind of money into it. And of course, you're gonna wanna renegotiate that, if you're gonna put that kind of money into a facility. He was very open to the whole discussion, so I don't, I think that part of the equation is something that can be accomplished. Lindy Palmer and I would suggest that the right way to, to proceed on that is to hire somebody to put together an RFP with some, at least, basic design elements so that we're getting bids on the, on the facility we want. That'll cost a little bit of money, so we're not gonna pull this off for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's gonna cost more than that. But, but we don't have to go, we don't have to go for top of the line, I almost said Cadillac, but I guess that doesn't count anymore. I'm that old. But we'll, but we can pursue that one, I think, fairly quickly. The harder part of the pickleball equation is always, or is still gonna be, what other kinds of location can we get in the short term while we're trying to build something like that? And I don't, I can't tell you I've got solutions to that. I've talked to the school superintendent, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna repeat her words right now, but she had some facilities she's open-minded to, she's not speaking for the board, that would be a board decision. And then some facilities she'd be more open to. And I think we'll just have to pursue that in terms of whether there's a school district solution. I have not worked with a committee, I have not had time to put anything together that would, that committee of people of goodwill to figure out what to do about Lower Libby and, and the existing site, which I know that, that the council had indicated you wanna try to abandon at some point. And I haven't been able to, to work on that, so that's still something that's work in progress that we need to do. But that's basically where I am with, with pickleball. And I only try to remind people, it hadn't been that long since August thirtieth. General plan, Lucas has put together an incredible report on the status of, of general plan, and we'll be bringing that to you pretty shortly. I'll, I'll tell you that I thought, I thought the general plan was further along than it is. Anyone who thinks that they came on the council when the general plan was already pretty well wrapped up, it's not. You got plenty of time for your input on the general plan. It's, there's a lot that's been done, but there's still several hundred thousand dollars' worth of work, part of that's budgeted, that needs to be done. He's also going to provide estimates on, and options on climate, climate action plan. And there was another element that apparently was asked for that related to tourism management. And he's got, I think, estimates on what it would take to do those, those pieces of analysis, if you wanted to do that. But that's coming very shortly, we're, he's done a lot of work on that, he's, and, and there's a ways, there, we haven't done the environmental yet. We haven't done the Project EIR yet. This general plan's gonna, I'll be long gone before this general plan gets done. So it, it's not in a situation like I had once thought that we were on the verge of adopting, we're not that far along.
And there's no deadline for that, right?
Well, we're supposed to do our general plans within a certain timeframe, but I would tell you that if you've surveyed the cities of California, you'd find that we're probably in the middle of the pack, not at the, we're not trailing at the end.
The housing element is the only one that's the hard.
There are a few elements that have to be done, and the housing element is, of course, the biggie. I will, the only thing I wanna say about revenue options, and I've said it before, if there is any thought about putting a tax issue on the March ballot, I need to put this on like next meeting. And if that, if I'm seeing some yes headshakes. So I, I better get this on, we need to talk about it, 'cause there's a lead time on that that we need to watch.
May I ask a question about the March ballot? So the December fourth is the deadline?
If, if not sooner. If, if not sooner.
Yeah, it's 88 days before the ballot, which is the 4th or the 5th.
One of the other priorities was a city council annual cost of living increase?
That doesn't go on the ballot.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask, because I thought, I heard you say that we had to put it before the voters. That was not my original understanding.
No, it doesn't have to go before the voters.
We can do that.
We can do that. I would, I would like to do that. Unless somebody, I mean, I've been told by council members before, "No, don't do that to us." But I will, councils, councils wait forever to change the compensation, and it's, you need to be at least able to get a little bit of your expense back.
Yeah, and it's about equity. You want people that can afford to serve.
That's right. And in the future, it will affect whether somebody can afford to run. So I would do that. All right, I'm going to cut this short. The budget, the capital budget fiscal model, I, I think it's very important to do that one. And I'm going to get some quotes on that. I've talked to a couple of firms already, and there's others that I'm sure we'll, we'll quote. I think you need that. When you have your new manager and you go into your next budget, I think you need to have that. So I'm going to take that one and move it. Andy, we were sitting there a minute ago, is working on a housing, affordable housing forum, or housing or affordable housing? Both. Both.
There's no official title yet.
Yes. We'll call it Fred. And he's, he's working on one that I'm impressed by. I think there may be some elements that I'd want to do as a follow-up to what he's working on. But right now, my predilection is to work with him on what he's working on as part of the Gora Foundation initiative. And, and so hopefully, we can have something positive happen in that arena. Citywide speed limits, that's something that could be done. I, I think we still may have to do some speed surveys, even, even under the new law. But, but we can, that's an initiative that can be moved relatively independent of a lot of other projects. The one thing that I, the two things that I think we haven't done that are really important. One is the fire hardening and the NIMS training. Maybe that, the NIMS training, you'd be better off to wait for your new manager and a few other department heads that we need to have onboard. The fire hardening, what could be a more pressing issue than that? And we probably should get some kind of a idea of what it is we want to work on in that arena. And we probably need to get the chief and the former chief and people who are interested in helping us with that, and see what we can put together on that.
Just a question.
Yeah.
What does NIMS stand for?
National Incident Management System. It's the protocols that every government and nonprofit agency in the country trains to use in an emergency management situation. Whether it's an earthquake, or a flood, or a biological attack, you use the same format, the same structure. I trained in, where I was working, Trina trained where she's working, and yet, if we had an EOC call-out, we would be using the same structure. We would know innately to use the same structure, because that's what the whole world trains on. And it's really powerful. So the council needs to be, it's really a requirement that we all train on NIMS.
And Mark, just a question. We do have a disaster council meeting in a couple of weeks, which you're on now.
Yeah.
Could we?
It's on my calendar.
Could we talk about those?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. I think that's the place to talk about it, yeah. And finally, I was going to mention the council protocols workshop. I still think that's a good idea. I'm sorry that you all got so stressed with the commission discussion, because frankly, when you talk about council protocols, you can go through some stress. It's just part of being on a city council. It's part of being in a team that has to work through what your protocols are going to be. But I think it's very worthwhile, and I think it needs to be done. And I think you can pick the top, the council can pick the topics you want to start with. We could do one of these every six months and have plenty to work on. But you, we'll put some topics out there, and you can figure out which ones you want to start with, and you can pick a date, and we'll, we'll do the first workshop. We said we were going to wrap into that, the Ethics Commission concept, and the Code of Conduct, I believe, was what the phrase was. And so that's, that's something that we can do within the context of that. So that kind of, other than growth management philosophy, which was my, my dream, that I'm not, you're not going to do while I'm here, because we're not going to get to it. But I think it's still worth doing. So that, I've covered all 12 of the topics.
It's impressive. Thank you very much for that. Any questions from council? Mayor Protem?
Microphone, Mayor Protem?
Thank you so much for reminding me. Sorry. On the council protocols workshop, code slash Code of Conduct slash Ethics Commission, that's an umbrella for a number of whatever the council thinks is important. It could include how the city meetings are run, the length of time, you know, conduct, and how the agenda is set. All of that.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, my idea is that we find a very respectful way to deal with those issues, building up our processes, rather than finding a way to complain about how everything's been done this way or wrong. I don't, I don't think we need to deal with the past so much as we need to deal with, okay, going forward, what is it we want to do, and what do we think the protocol should be? If we can have those kinds of discussions in that context, I think it can be very useful.
Yeah. Two things that have been brought up recently, and the writers are in the audience. Drew Mash.
It's right, we're still on questions. Can we wait?
Okay, I'll wait.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, let's move on to public comment. We have Jessica McGray and Renee Roth.
Hi, I'm Eagan, on this subject. Thank you so much for everything that you're doing. We definitely appreciate it, and did get the restrooms, which is great. I know that you are moving forward, but still.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, but still, growing.
Oh, yeah.
Loud noises all night long. It's unruly and crazy, and just keeps going. So I know there's things going on, but we can't, the community cannot feel it, see it, that anything's happening. I would love to volunteer to, if you need some organization here, here's a campground. I'll volunteer to get a group smart enough to put those together tomorrow, and get that done while you're trying to hire someone to actually manage it. But to organize it, because that's what we need. We need some structure, some organization. If we need to speed it up, I'll volunteer to get those smarter people, you know, to get it done.
I hope you understand that, that I really need to have the, the person in control with the authority to be involved in the creating of the rules and, and agreeing on who's going to be where, and what's in bounds and what's out of bounds. I really need to have that in place, but I think I'm really close.
Okay. I hope so, because that really needs to get taken care of.
I lose sleep over this, not the way you lose it, because you're hearing the noise, and that's losing sleep. I lose sleep at night when I think about what's going on out here, and knowing that it's something I'm supposed to be taking the lead on. So I'm feeling that every day.
Okay.
All the way driving to and from Fresno, I'm thinking about that, I promise you.
And I do, I do know that it takes a long time. It just, it just seems that the conversations just spin, and no actual action happens. And that's what we need desperately with this situation, is action. So I do, and, and I know you guys are doing your best. A couple of suggestions. I know, working with the county, hopefully, you can get a good relationship with the county. Cabrillo could take care of half the people out here, according to the task force report, right? There are a lot of elderly people out here that should not be out there. And Cabrillo could, could house half of those people. Why do we not ask the, the county to fast-track it? Why is it going to take two years to build it? Uh, yes. Yeah, that could.
I don't know the answer to that, but we are talking to Cabrillo, Cabrillo about Miramani.
And if we can, yeah, and if there's anything we can do, work with the county to speed that up. We need it months ago, right? So for it to wait two years, to have our elderly sleeping out here for two years, is just, it's heartbreaking. So, and then the other, for those that are able-bodied and can, you know, aren't on the elderly scale, but on the younger scale, can we get vouchers for camp comfort? Set them up in actual camping sites while we figure out what else to do, instead of sites that, you know.
Yeah, I appreciate the suggestion. I'll bring it up.
Yeah, so that was, that was it. Just a couple of suggestions, and please, please.
Thank you, Jessica. Next, we have Renee Roth.
Okay, Mr. Mark Scott, I have to say, as soon as you start talking and explaining things, I am just like, yes, keep explaining, keep doing more, keep. You have a way of being open and honest and experienced and an administrator who can explain things quickly and easily and get to the bottom line. So when we're talking about a new city manager and what we're looking for, we're looking for somebody like you, to me, in my mind. We're looking for somebody just like you, Mr. Mark Scott. And so that's. So, but, but I agree with you. We have issues with our governing structure. The governing structure of our council, when you get a new majority, and they, as we have seen in the past, they can dictate and control and fire a city manager. You came in and you were able to say, "Look, you can't fire me, and you've got to listen to me and pay attention to me, because I know what I'm talking about here." And you did. And that's very impressive. Credentials and government speak, in my mind. A lot of people don't have that ability to do it. So that's what we're looking for in a new city manager. I would hope that others here can begin to step up and start thinking about our governing structure, because I've seen so much more division since we've gone to the elected mayor, separate from the council districts. I loved, in fact, Mayor Betsy's idea of a youth council. But if it's a mayor's youth council, and you have a rotating mayor, then it's okay to have a mayor's youth council, because it rotates. And there's rotating council members. And you were all talking about how you wanted to have council members be rotating. So these are the kinds of issues that I want to be able to go to sleep at night and not have to worry about what is happening at City Hall. And I don't ever want to have to go to another council meeting again. If I know that you're in good hands, you've got good ideas, and a good administrator, and I agree with you, Ojai is a very special place. When I moved here, I thought any government employee here is so lucky to have a job here. I really mean that. So there's so much potential, and so much hope, and so much optimism for our future. And you're the right man for this job. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Any comments online, Weston?
Yes, one raised hand. Jerry Schenke, you have the floor?
Hi, me again. You know, I worked with homeless people here in the Ojai Valley for the past 20 years as an overnight host, and for my first couple of years, I guess, as a board member on the Ojai Valley Family Shelter. And I heard a lot of good ideas here tonight. I heard a really bad idea, and that's pushing the homeless population down to camp comfort. It's moving them further away from, remember, most of them are on foot. It's pushing them further away from services, from vital services and resources. And it's going to lead to having those people walk that distance, back and forth in, into town and back down to camp comfort, frequently after dark. You know, I think that we're supposed to help them, not kill them, you know? Because walking along a street road after dark is pretty chancy. Other than that, I like what I heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Is that it, Weston?
That's all, Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
I'd like to respond to what Jerry just said.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, when I heard vouchers for camp comfort or other campsites, I was thinking of the homeless people that are living in their cars, or camping but have a car. I don't think anyone is expecting people without a car, unless they're carpooling with somebody that has a car, to, it's not about forcing. It was an option, right? The voucher might be an option, but we're not going to hand people vouchers and force them into a faraway campground. Am I correct? I just want to put that to rest. Am I right?
In front of us at this point.
Yeah, yeah. It's in front of us, okay. Well, anyway, I wouldn't want that.
Well, I would just like to thank you for this list and all the work in getting all these projects going, and.
And please, I gave the report. I'm not doing all the work.
You're not?
Right. So please take it in that vein, right?
Well, thank you for giving the report. It's much appreciated. Council members, any comments?
I just want to second that. This, I mean, you say that you are not doing a lot of work, but the, how much you've done in the short time that you've been here is incredible. And the fact that we've actually made progress on all these things is really because of you. So thank you, it's because of, you know, because of your leadership and, and continuing to keep us moving in that direction.
Yeah, there's a lot of people doing a lot of stuff.
I'd also like to thank our staff, who works tirelessly, and pretty skeleton crew, and we are really grateful. So Matt, thank you. Carl, thank you. Trina, thank you. Not staff, but.
I want to ask.
You're important. Anybody else?
I do want to ask. Oh, I'll wait.
Yeah, so, thank you also for all the staff. But there was a topic that came up tonight, and I think all five of us are in agreement that if there is a rule we can adopt that gives priority to Ojai residents for affordable housing opportunities, I think we're all ready to see that statute. And I'd like to see that come as quickly as possible. We're going to be dealing with affordable housing projects coming up. That should be on the books.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah, Matt, Matt had some good ideas earlier this evening on how to move that forward more expeditiously, so.
Yeah, I think the council has put that in the priority workshop on the to-do list, so we can move that forward faster than others.
Would that be, excuse me, would that be a pending agenda item? When we get to that section of the.
I think you all just did.
Yeah, I was just saying, yeah.
But we are, we are, we still have yet to do the future agenda items.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Council member, Elaine?
I actually do have a question. Would, in the capital budget fiscal mode, would that be an area where we could talk about things like the management of Libby Bowl, and the lights, and the staffing, and things like that?
That's more of an operating budget issue.
Okay.
And I think when you, when you get into the budget this year, I think what you're referencing is, is that one of the practices that the city adopted a few years ago, when the budget was being cut, was to eliminate the staffing of events at Libby Bowl. Not entirely, because, what's the gentleman's name?
Doogie.
Doogie.
Doogie, yeah.
I've got to meet Doogie.
And Mark, Mark is awesome, too. He helps out. Doogie's, Doogie's great. He was actually here tonight.
Yeah.
He was?
Yeah, yeah, he was here.
Wish I'd have met him. But everybody. But everybody, um, you know, so there, there, there are people who are, who are there and who help, but, but we did get some criticism that the city should be, actually be staffing it. There's a qu- equipment there and all. James Hahn, who is probably in the back room, is the master of so many different things. Believe me, IT people don't do all the things that James does here. It, he's really extraordinary and the new, and his new assistant, James.
Yeah, I just remembered.
James and James and James around here. But, um, so that, yeah, there's, there's things that we could, we could put more staffing in. There's, there's a number of places where I would put more staffing if we had the money to do it. So that'll be one of those trade-offs the council needs to look at.
Any other comments?
I'm gonna ask.
Other than a lot of gratitude. Yep, uh, Mayor Potem?
Yeah, I have a question of, um, Chief Trina Newman. Is there anything more we can, we can do, anything we can pass to help control the noise at night? Like, what is your experience and what's happening with that? You know, at the homeless and camp.
Sure, yeah. Uh, I kind of assume that, cuz that's majority of, of where the complaints come from, is from the camps down there. Um, it, you know, it's a tough, it's a tough question to answer because we have such a variety of individuals that live down there. Um, we're not talking, usually when we get those complaints, we're not talking about the individuals who, um, may not have mental issues, drug issues. Uh, you know, I'm not trying to categorize these individuals, but based on what we've seen and the experiences we've had, that unfortunately influence their, influences their behavior. And so when we're talking about noise complaints, usually there's other things that are driving those behaviors. And we try to address those behaviors versus just the music complaint. And a lot of ti- a lot of times our hands are kind of tied in what we can do with individuals that have those types of problems. Um, you know, we're not, we, we try to address and give resources to those individuals that we can. And in other times, we may have to arrest those individuals and that is a short-term.
Very short.
Very short-term.
Yeah, 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 that's, okay, so nothing has changed in that respect as far as noise. It's not that mentally, uh, it's, I don't wanna use the wrong words, but it's not like the, uh, people are partying. It's, it's more a mental health issue and, and it's not so simple as, you know, quiet after nine PM, between nine and six, you know, there's, you know, normal campgrounds have those kinda rules.
Right, correct. And there, there's no doubt, there are instances where people are, are having parties, just like anywhere else, they can have a party in the city. Just because they're in an encampment doesn't make it any different for them.
Yeah.
Um, and we try to address those just like we would anywhere, anywhere else in the city, having a party at their home. So because they're living down there, there's not much more we can do because of their situation. It's, it's the, the city ordinances that we have to enforce and any other, um, laws that we can enforce based on the behaviors that we're seeing in those individuals.
We, we will try, to the extent that we can deal with people who have some capacity to understand the trade-offs, we will try to give people incentives to want to be cooperative with us.
Uh-huh.
Um, because we have, if we supervise this right, we have some things we can offer to them. And in return for that, we would hope that they would once be allowed to stay.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, but we, you know, I wanna be very careful what I say about dealing with the unhoused because there are, it's very, the legal issues are very tricky.
Yes.
But, um, but we will try to incentivize people to wanna cooperate with us better than some of the people have. And in some cases, we may need to find someplace else to tell someone they can go, um, other than where they are. And we'll be working on those options as well.
Thank you, thank you for everything, thank you.
Thank you, uh, council member, Rule?
Yeah, um, I just had a, an inquiry also for, uh, Chief Newman. Um, so I got an email, My Street Kids Riding Their Bikes Down, Tossed A Lime Through A Front Window, Broke It. Um, and so, and, and I know that this is continuing to happen. It's, we've, we've talked about it before. Um, what are our options here and, um, you know, how do we, how do we really deal with this? Other than to say, you know? So, uh, that, yeah, that's kinda my question because it is coming up more and more. It's kind of, it's expanding out the worry.
Definitely, we, we realize it's, it's, it's a growing concern. Um, we have had, um, and put out extra deputies out there. And when I say extra, you know, we're using the COPS grant to, to fund these sorts of things. So we have, um, during the week, we've put out extra deputies on foot and, or bike, whichever one. And then also on the weekends. And we realize that it's not gonna have a huge impact right away because again, we're, we're, we're choosing certain times and we're hoping that we may run into these incidents, we don't know for sure. Um, you know, to really address the problem, we would love to staff it seven days a week and, and extra on weekends to really have an impact on the problem. What we encourage our folks to do in the community, it, because I've had people ask me, because they're kids, right? That, you know, adults think that, oh, it's no biggie, I can go approach these kids, but, um, you know, it becomes, it's not like the kids are very respectful in any, any of these instances. And so it becomes an issue and, um, we've had community folks ask us if they can go and put their hands on these kids because they become so frustrated and, and that's the last thing we want to happen. And we just encourage people to, when this type of incident is going on, be the best witness that you can. You know, we've all seen people get out their cellphones and start recording the incident and that's fine. Uh, you know, give us descriptions of what's going on, call us when it's occurring so that we can get there as soon as we can. Um, and it's not only, unfortunately, it's not only in Ojai this is happening. We've had it occur in several other areas in, in, in the county and it's frustrating because we are talking about kids. You know, even us, you know, when these things happen, we're not gonna go chase down these kids and tackle them to the ground. So it's, um, there's only so much we can do. But in instances where they're vandalizing, it's no different than addressing it if it was any other incident of vandalism or, um, crime occurring in the city. So, uh, you know, we are trying to address it, um, by putting extra deputies out there in hopes that it will deter, um, these, you know, kids from doing these types of things. Um, and just kind of going through information as we get it, who these kids might be, if we can, um, get in touch with parents and educate the parents about what's going on. So, you know, it's, it's kind of occurring on different levels.
Thank you. Thank you, Trina. Uh, are any other comments? Can we, uh, move on? Thank you very much for that report. Okay, let's move on to council members' reports, anything? Council members?
I have something that I wanted to, to just, I just wanted to give a huge shout out to Jeff Palmer and the Sanit- uh, sanitary district. Um, I had the opportunity of taking a tour of the new construction and the new project that they have going on right now to reduce the amount of phosphorus that's going into the, into the river. And, um, and they have been able to come in under budget, basically work miracles. And the whole entire plant is like one great big kombucha. It's incredible. So I just really wanted to thank Jeff for all his work at keeping our water safe and clean.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to thank the Ojai Valley Museum for a wonderful reception on Friday night, the Ojai Studio Artists. Um, packed and really fun and great art, so bravo, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, uh, city manager report?
No, I'm done.
Okay. Okay, future agenda items, we have that?
Yeah. I have one.
Okay.
Um, so I would like to bring up the Film Society's, uh, uh, comment today about getting some legacy dates on the calendar.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, and I, I sent you all an email during the meeting. Um, we're all, we're very aware of all that. And the, the, next year it'll be very easy. If the council wants to consider these legacy dates, we can, we'll just book them ahead of time. What happens, and what happened this year is that we have a contract with Sterling, I guess it's called, that does the concert scheduling and we have a contract with them and we give them dates in advance. And they then put out proposals to, um, to, to groups to book the dates. And they've got all these, these formal proposals out to these groups and working on dates. And the Fi- Film Soci- I get confused between Festival and Society. They came in looking for specific dates and several of the dates were out. They were, they were already out, so we couldn't. We have asked the Sterling people, if the dates fall through, let us have them back because we'll, we will then give them to the Film Society. But, um, but we aren't able to accommodate all of their dates this year cuz we've got contractual stuff that's going on. But if, but next year, if they give them to us in advance, we can, we can book them and reserve them and it should be fine. Um, and we think we're gonna get some of them back. Um, we, they've already got some and Carl was telling me, there's some others that they haven't come in and booked yet, but we've, but we've got them available.
Yeah, there's a question six, two of the six are available for the conflict with Sterling. Except for that, there's, cuz they're all private, there's three remaining, there's seven other available, so we're gonna have to.
Microphone, please?
Sterling has told us they'd probably have an answer, likely around the new year, on the complete schedule and what they can release. But we are, we have asked them, as they know, if they could let us know.
Thank you, Carl. Um, council member, Rule?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of agenda items. So, um, I definitely would like to move forward with SB six four nine on the agenda. I think we need a little bit of education as well, so I don't know how exactly that would work. Um, and, uh, also figuring out if there is a way for, um, you know, private developers who might be doing low income or, you know, might be willing also, we could give out information to them um, on how they might, I mean, they're not, they can do what they wanna do. But, um, encourage them as well, any development to look to Ojai citizens first. And if we develop a model, we can actually pass that on to them in ways that they might be able to do it. So I would expand SB six four nine to include private developers as well, so as we think forward, so. Um, and also obviously the tax issue. Um, I think we've all been speaking about that since, um, day one. And, um, this might have been for a council report, I'm not exactly sure. Um, but also within, in my district, numerous times, as I'm sure with, you know, a couple of different districts, um, is speed bumps. So, you know, I have Fulton from Ojai Ave to Grand that has only one stop sign and no lights. Um, so I am going, I, I would like to, I, it's a bigger discussion with safety, but, um, more and more people are coming up to me and they're just worried about their kids. So I'm actually gonna do a survey of both Drowned and North Fulton from Ojai Ave to, um, Grand to see, you know, how many kids are actually there. Like, I know on my block, I know on Fulton from Ojai Ave to Grand where all the kids are. I, I'm not as clear on Drowned, so, and there are a lot of kids. Um, and so I'm getting, I'm getting more and more requests for, uh, the speed bumps and we've had people come.
I'm talking about speed humps or the ones that we're testing?
Yes, speed humps, whatever.
Not the, not the flat ones that we're using?
Um, well, those aren't really flat.
No, they're not. And, and I like them. I, they call them speed cushions, but.
Oh, I was trying to figure out, yeah, I couldn't remember.
I like them personally.
Yeah, yeah.
Believe me, I know more about speed humps than any human being should ever have to know. I've, I've even been threatened to be turned into a speed hump before.
Yes, the speed cushions, um, some sort of way to calm the traffic just because of the danger for kids.
Yeah, they're, it's a big issue.
Yeah.
It's a big question that, that it's, when you start working on it street by street, you know, hold on tight.
Well, we have, yeah, sorry.
So we, we have the test that's out there. We've, we're doing, James Hahn is, and Brian are doing speed surveys, you know, to measure what kind of impact they're having. It's not huge, it's a little bit of a reduction in the speed, you know, that it, that it allows. And then people also need to be aware of what the, what they really do accomplish. And, you know, you can't, you can't engineer for people who are driving down the street sixty miles an hour. Um, those kinds of people, the speed humps more likely to turn them into a, a missile than it's likely to slow them down. But, so you, you, you go through these and you, and you really work through it methodically to figure out, okay, where does it make sense? Where doesn't it? Where, where under the code can you do it? When you've got a completely flat street, under the code, you don't really have a lot of risk as long as it's not too wide. If it's, if it's two, you know, two lanes each way, you, you can't do the speed humps. But if you have a regular resi-
We don't have any of those.
No, I don't think we do, actually.
Actually, America of the highway, correct?
Yeah, that, that's right. So we're, we're actually in pretty good shape on that one. But you can't do it on a curve, you can't do it on a, on a slope, but, um, and you find when you start putting them in, you can't do it in front of somebody's house who doesn't wanna bump in front of their house. Don't like bumps in the middle of the night. So there's a lot to it, but, yeah, take me out and show me the places and we'll, we'll do some analysis and and take a look. There's several others in town asking for the same.
Yeah, there are, and I, I will, I do the survey as well first so that we know how many kids we're actually talking about and what the, you know, what the risk kind of is. And, you know, our streets are, we're downtown, we're flat.
Yeah, it's mostly in this town you can do it. We, we've been putting speed dips in all over, it's called unpaved streets. And, um, and I think the biggest danger of our paving program is people drive faster with, on better streets.
That's right.
So we better think about how we're gonna deal with that.
Unintended consequences of paving.
One last one, um, I think you and I discussed is, I don't know what the process is for putting a two-two committee to
Yeah.
be, uh, with the school board, you know, uh, the school trustees, re- re-energizing that, that two-two so that we can actually, um, start talking about things.
We'll put that on the agenda for council to appoint a two-to, two-by-two.
A two-by-two, two times two, yeah.
I think council's been talking about that for a while.
Should be fairly easy, I mean, God knows.
Mayor Potem?
And now I have so many things. So first of all, um, to respond to the, um, number of kids and the speed, just, I don't wanna be a wet blanket, but this has been discussed for twenty years. And until there's a paradigm shift where we make the children of the commu- the, the, what's the word? The benchmark is that if every child can ride safely to wherever they wanna go, then you have a bicycle-friendly community. It's good to know how many children, but it doesn't matter because that child can, may go down the street. It should, should be safe, that, that should, in a ci- in cities, and traffic can be calmed. Go look at the, the twenty sixteen Complete Streets Master Plan that we adopted. Look at what other cities are doing and it can be done. It absolutely can be done, that we can be a model for a truly, you know, all of these are safe routes to school. So a truly bicycle, pedestrian-friendly community. The kids are the measure, not the people that are adult and can look, you know, out. It's the kids, that, that's the, uh, what's the word? The, the measure i- if it's safe for kids, that's the measure.
Okay.
Then I wanted to ask, people keep, uh, the, as far as the, the SB six four nine, is it understood that priority is not just people that are trying to stay and live here, but it's also the people that are already working here that are commuting from Oxnard, teachers that are commuting? Is that understood?
So I think that's gonna be one of the key points to consider when the council hears the item in full, is where the options are for setting preferences for residents versus workers here versus both. All to be decided by the council and when the item comes back. And do include a discussion of options to incentivize developers to provide such preferences.
Okay, okay.
So we'll include all of the above as part of the future discussion.
Okay, and then real quick, I ca- uh, you know, you brought up Sterling and the concerts at Libby Park. I keep hearing these complaints about yellow tape that prevents dancing, so I, I don't have an answer. Who, who, who's doing that?
I'll have to ask.
It's not the city?
I don't have a clue what that means, but I'll find out.
You can ask Sterling, like, cuz we get, there's a lot of complaints and it's, and people are not liking it. and it's, and people are not liking it, right? I don't go to those concerts, somebody else.
Do you know why they put up yellow tape at the concerts?
I do not know. I, the only...
Keep people from rushing the stage?
We actually did have that incident.
We did, yeah.
The last, yes.
Do you know?
For rushing the stage?
Yes. It was for the, for this most recent concert that did occur.
We'll find out.